Good evening, welcome everyone to this session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, August the 22nd, meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. First item on the agenda is a follow-up discussion on fiscal year 2023 and 2024 budget. Mr. Herman, you're up.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Alright, so this is a follow-up from last council meeting. We had our park board meeting last night and presented the full slideshow to them, plus added a couple, or added a couple slides with more information on it. So just as a reminder, the project cost to convert Unity Tennis into pickleball is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. It's resurfacing for twelve pickleball courts, basically twelve permanent pickleball posts and nets, and a four-foot separation of fence. And the project with no delays, it's about a sixty-day project timeline. This is a configuration that was shown at a previous council meeting.
So your four-foot, your four-foot fence, where is that gonna be?
Right here.
Okay.
And right here. This is an eight-foot fence that exists.
These small fences, what are they gonna be constructed of?
Metal.
Metal fences? Like the chain link, or?
Yeah, chain link, yes.
Now, the eight-foot will still have the screen on, right?
Yes, we're not taking.
Will the four-foot have, would it just be just?
No, we won't put a screen on that, it's not needed. So, public input, the opportunities, we had a community survey that lasted about eight days, and this was shared on our city website, email newsletter, our social media channels, and the online cross-temperance visit, as well as last night's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting. Last night was an opportunity for the public to come in and speak. So here are the survey results. The question was, do you support the conversion of Unity Tennis Courts to Pickleball Courts? And we had four hundred, out of five hundred and thirty-three, four hundred and twenty-three, basically eighty percent said yes, and twenty percent, one hundred and ten, said no. It was an overwhelming amount in favor of the conversion. So, based on the survey results, in yesterday evening's meeting, the board recommends to the council that they approve the supplemental request for the conversion of Unity Park Tennis Courts to a pickleball facility.
Is there any discussion on adding screening, overhead screening for day use, especially in this heat?
A roof structure?
Not necessarily a roof structure, but even canvas tarps or something to decorate.
For seating outside of the pickleball courts or over the pickleball courts? For play, no, there wasn't, but that is something that can be considered in the future as a phase two or three?
Yeah, I'm just considering the summer months here, I'm pretty.
Yeah, they're pretty brutal. The pickleball folks that come out there and play right now at Unity, they're, they're out there pretty early, as soon as daylight hits, six, six-thirty.
And late.
And late, yeah, late in the evening as well. There's not too many people in there between, you know, eleven and four-thirty. But they definitely take advantage of the cooler times of the day.
Do the tennis players share that same timeframe essentially?
When they're there, yes.
So there's really not a conflict between the two? I guess when I'm looking, I'm going back to my initial question before, when you presented, which was using the, the facilities as shared facilities and the logistics to do shared, rather than spending the money to convert them. Is there a possibility to use it both, if there's not a conflict in the times and everything else?
Well, yes, there is an opportunity to do that, we're doing it now.
Right.
The, the facility currently has pickleball overlaid on tennis.
Right.
The primary activity that is out there predominantly is pickleball. Pickleball does not have its own facility right now. Tennis has Highland Village Tennis Center and will be converting the one court that has pickleball lines on it at Sell Meyer back to tennis, which will bring two, four, six tennis courts.
Plus the facility on Highland Village Road.
Yes, that's the Highland Village Tennis Center, yes, sir.
Did either, were either of you able to get any clarification on what Highland Shores is doing?
I didn't.
I was at the board meeting yesterday, who was not brought up at all.
I know recently, the courts closest to us, if you're going down Highland Shores, in fact, if you go by there tonight, it'll be packed with pickleball players. It has been in the morning as well, so we're utilizing that quite a bit. The courts there by the main pool, Hillside and Highland Shores, that, I've seen tennis there. There's a lot of tennis players on that, more, but at least the ones here, there's a lot of pickleball players on.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, once we convert these to pickleball, we don't have the option anymore of making them tennis courts?
Oh, yes.
It eliminates them from being tennis.
No, we can.
So what do we, what?
We can, we can convert them back.
Well, I mean, not, not easily.
Right.
So what did, what's the advantage of making this a hundred percent pickleball? What are we gaining here by spending this money and removing the ability to pay, play tennis out there?
We provide a dedicated pickleball court like what we have for tennis.
Why can't we just dedicate it during scheduling, things like that? I mean, if they're out there, they're gonna be out there utilizing pickleball courts.
Spring and, spring and fall, when the temperatures start to cool, there's gonna be more activity than what we see today. The advantage doing it here that I see is it takes it away from, it takes it further away from homeowners, so that they don't have to deal with the noise that's associated with pickleball, pickleball can get kind of loud.
I agree, I.
But you're also getting more, yeah, you get more pickleball courts in versus tennis court overlays.
But it's a temporary net, right? It's just some striping down, they can put down?
Well, but the way the striping is.
The way they're doing it now.
It is inside a tennis court striping.
I understand.
So you only get one per. Three extra.
I think the way they're doing it now, there's basically cutting them in half with their nets and playing two to a court.
That is correct.
Two to a court?
You can fit two pickleball courts on one tennis court.
That's what they're doing now?
Right.
I believe in the evenings, when I'm out there.
In the mornings, yeah.
So again, I'm gonna ask, I mean, why do we need to dedicate this as a pickleball-only facility now? What are we gaining?
Become more popular. It's become more popular, it's, the way I can liken this, I don't know if this is a good example. When World Cup came here in nineteen ninety-four, soccer was about that big. After World Cup came and left, cities all across the metroplex started putting in soccer fields. Same question. This is a, is something that the community wants, so we started building dedicated soccer fields to fit the need. Pickleball is kind of in that same arena. There is a quantifiable need for pickleball, and we see it in the numbers that we have here. We see it in Highland Shores, we see it with corporations out there like Chicken and Pickle building these sites. Pickleball as well, I see it all around in my DFW Directors Association with folks building pickleball dedicated facilities, and it's positive activity. Now, it's, you know, it's up to council, we don't, you know, we don't necessarily have to do that, but.
I'm just trying to find the benefits for it, because it is cost, and it is something that we're losing the ability to play tennis there. I'm just asking questions.
Losing is a strong word, because if you look, if you put them, if you put it both on a graph, what you would see is tennis is going this way, and pickleball is going that way, and they've intersected. Tennis is on the decline in terms of participation, pickleball's on the rise. And a lot of the people that are playing pickleball, they're playing pickleball because they're too old to play tennis. They can't move around on a tennis court as much.
And interesting enough, and I spoke about this last night, the numbers are coming out. We're seeing a larger amount now of your fifteen-to-thirty-year-olds getting into pickleball. So it's, it's becoming a, very much a multi-generational sport.
There's revenue to be made here, too.
Yeah, there's revenue to be made, and.
Well, you should have led with that, not. And that's the problem here, that means we're gonna try and make money and attract tournaments and that.
Yeah, well, I mean.
That's the other plus to this location, is, is they, is, we could host tournaments here and leverage the concession stand at the, at the ball fields, since walking distance.
Well, that makes sense to me, but, I mean, hold on.
Okay.
Are we gonna forbid pickleball at the other tennis courts around the city?
That's the goal.
By signage?
Yes.
Tennis players can come and kick them off, all these rogue pickleball tennis.
Tennis, tennis. Yeah, I, I had an eight-thousand-dollar placeholder, it wasn't a part of this budget, but I can definitely, and, and that's for Sell Meyer to repaint it, we still haven't received a quote back from Dobbs, they're, they're just really slow about that. But yes, we can, we, we, the goal is to go back in and turn Sell Meyer into full tennis, so. Highland Village Tennis Center, sorry, would, would be dedicated tennis, and Sell Meyer would be dedicated tennis, and then Unity would be dedicated pickleball. But I did want to speak about tournaments, so here's the thing with tournaments. We went and visited Wagon Wheel in Capel. I don't know if anyone is familiar with that site, but it's a, it's a tennis and it's a pickleball site. We met with a pro there. And for tournaments, you need at least thirty pickleball courts, okay? In order to have a tournament like USA Pickleball, something that big. Now, that's a sanctioned tournament, there's not to say that we can't have a city tournament here or a local tournament that those can be utilized for. You know, Highland Shores, Neighborhood Associations, Lantana, you know, other, other cities around here that aren't looking for a sanctioned pickleball type of facility. This is not gonna be that. This is just putting in courts, high volume, giving folks the opportunity to play, generate some foot traffic, folks that will take those feet and move into our business district and spend money there. Hopefully, that's what we're looking at. Same thing that we look at when we look at baseball, softball, and the other events that we do in recreation for programming. And there's also opportunities to sell advertising space on the outside of that and on the inside, just like we do on baseball and softball as well. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, she's been very patient, so I appreciate that.
No, I would like to ask if you could reconsider taking away pickleball from Sell Meyer, at least have the option? Because there's not much over on that side of town, and when I drive home at work at seven o'clock, six o'clock at night, that's what I see, sometimes I, they're older people, but sometimes it's grandparents, and so there's really no other place to walk to to play pickleball.
So to, to take it out or to leave it?
To leave it, at least the option to just take it, put it, yeah. I would like to ask if you would reconsider, or at least look at the traffic. Because there's a lot of, I've, there's older people on this, on my side of town, I love. But I see them a lot with their younger, it's a multi-generational, and that's.
There's, there's none, there's just a park at the, at the freebie. There's no tennis courts, there's no pickleball.
That's our idea.
The only thing you have on the east side is Highland Village Road and Sell Meyer.
That's it, that's all we got.
There's no, nothing else within the city on this side.
For tennis and pickleball? That is, that is correct. Yes, that's right.
And I think it'd be, if you look at a compromise, just to where, if they come, I mean, and they can.
Well, and that's why I didn't put in this year's budget the resurfacing of Sell Meyer, quite honestly, that's what it was for.
Leave it as it is?
Yeah, leave it as it is, because I mean, I just, the summer, when it's light out, I see more, yeah.
I, I had a question, I wanted, related to someone asked Chief Ryan, with, with, assuming this happens, to turn the Unity Tennis Courts into pickleball, and it attracts pickleball players from Flowermount, Double Oak, all of, all the area. Any possibility of having a conversation with the school district about a flock camera in the Briar Hill parking lot?
Would you want to do Briar Hill or the backside?
I, well, both, I mean, I've always wanted a flock camera on the backside, but certainly, that, you know, that, that parking lot on the backside of Briar Hill for sure, because you'd get a lot of parking traffic there.
So you're asking me to ask them, should we put a camera in at our expense, or ask them to pay for the?
Oh, I want, I want to put a camera in, I want them to pay for it.
I guess we, the, the driving factor would be some type of mechanism also to see how much traffic increases and things like that. We know the numbers. Vents amount of cars, I mean, just in those spots, so.
Yeah, I think it's, with, just with baseball and softball, I think there's a justifiable need for that parking lot anyway. I think there is for both sides of Unity, but with this addition, you'll have constant traffic there, it'd be nice to know who's coming and going.
It's the top for a few minutes, what was the timeline, there's sixty days to build it, if it was approved, it wouldn't start till when?
Get with the contractor and then understand the, you know, the product, temperature time for it to be out, things like that, weather. So I, I, I really don't have a, a timeline right now.
Before the end of the calendar year, or?
Probably not, because we're gonna get into our prime pickleball season in the fall.
It's a calendar year, not fiscal year, so before December thirty-first?
So there's a non-prime pickleball season?
Yeah, I think that we've upset some folks, unless we can phase it, but.
So to answer your query, question there even more in depth, is put together different than ours?
A little bit.
So it'd be a good time to address it with them, put in their notes, budget, to address it. And then if not, we can always come back and counsel.
What are you talking about, what, about five grand for the camera, or is it?
About twenty and three fifty per year.
Okay. Superintendent could probably pencil-whip that one. Who would be the primary vendor for the pickleball courts?
We're speaking to someone right now, that will, that is ready to come in and do lessons and all of that, just like we have for tennis. But, you know, this is gonna require some management, we have to make decisions on open play, beginner play, what we're charging, if we are gonna charge, because this is an opportunity to generate money, especially when you look at the number of respondents, you know, five hundred and thirty, or four hundred and twenty-three or four, then you go back and you look at the, the group me of three hundred and sixty-two, these are folks that are playing in Highland Village right now. So we're, we're gonna, these are high numbers, these are higher than, well, higher than I would expect. We're, we're gonna have a lot of people, and, and I can tell you, just from a treat, and I can't remember the other facility that is close to here, but, I mean, they're pretty well booked constantly. Yes.
Two things, I am a firm believer that our taxpayers shouldn't be paying. I mean, if, if, if we're, I mean, if people are coming in, they're using our stuff, but another thing is, is if we're gonna have people run it, I, I think there should always be people.
Yes.
There shouldn't ever be to where, oh, there's class, you can't come, there should be one or two set aside always for open play.
Actually, we're gonna have a steering committee that is made up of two park board members and one outside member that is gonna help with what this looks like, if this goes in as a, as a permanent facility, and make decisions as far as, do we leave two, three, six of them, half of them open? And then do we designate a portion of them for beginners? And then the other six are for programming and also our vendor. But it'd be similar to what we have with tennis right now, we have open times for folks to show up at the tennis center, and then we also have, yes, program times for lessons and classes.
No, I'll defer my questions. What was the, what was the amount of courts to, to a USA Pickleball tournament?
Roughly about thirty.
Thirty?
And a hotel.
Yeah.
It's common.
Restaurants, all of that.
How are the courts going to be accessed? Is it open gate or is it locked gate?
It's an open gate like it is now.
I, I highly doubt this, but I'm gonna ask the question anyway. We didn't expect vandalism and dump tree, but we got it on the splash pad. Bicycles and that kind of thing. Have we had any problem with tennis courts in that regard? Do we expect any, do we have any statistics around, surrounding pickleball and, and the courts for the other cities that it uses?
From me personally, there's just been two occasions, and it hasn't been vandalism, it's been used that was not as intended design. Last week, there was an individual out there practicing soccer at the Highland Village Tennis Center, and I just asked him to leave, because that's not what it's designed for, and he left. Real quiet about it, and then another time, same, same facility, there were scooters and skateboards in there. Same thing, I asked him to leave, and they did, and we haven't had any issues. And having a primary tenant there, they report to us pretty regularly on those things. Plus, we have inspections that we do monthly that look at those things and look for damage. And then the community here is very active, they, they, they let us know. It's a very, very good community. Whether it's tall grass, broken sprinkler head, a light out on a trail, you know, vandalism.
Better than the internet.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
And they utilize the Eye on Highland Village quite a bit, so it's a, it's a great program, it's dynamic. We usually prioritize things, and we can take care of it, if it's a vandalism issue, we usually take care of it that day. But usually, you know, within seventy-two hours.
Thank you.
Great questions, so like I said, you know, looking for council's direction here, based off the recommendation.
What was his total cost? Sixty-eight, I think, sixty-eight. Okay, yeah.
So this would be, this would be like when we, on the, on the budget agenda?
It'd be part of the submitted, I think.
Yeah.
Keep it in.
Agreed.
But we're also going to, as she proposed, eliminate converting Sell Meyer from two primarily, I believe that is a variable.
Correct, we're gonna wait to see how the community responds, and then I'll, I can report back to council on that if you would like. Is this, I'm gonna do?
Okay.
Alright.
I want to make a comment, I love our community engagement, I mean, five hundred responses. And when we did the scooter helmet, we had nine hundred responses, so, you know, the new tools that we have and the way we're reaching out, I mean, we haven't had that, and this is, this is good, I mean, it was quick, it's fast response, so.
Yeah.
Hats off to you and Lori.
Right there, I'm not gonna take credit for that, it's all our.
No, but get people engaged, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number two is receive a presentation from the recent Highland Village Business Association Resident Survey. This is Mullins. See if you can beat five hundred and thirty-three or nine hundred and whatever it was.
I think I can. Alright, do you want to see if they're ready?
Yeah, Dries, Cobus, I, I, are you guys gonna share your video?
Okay, good, so we had an excellent opportunity to survey our residents and look at our businesses and how people are shopping here, and guide our efforts with the HVBA and the city, and so we're excited to share those results with you today. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background, the HVBA was formed in nineteen ninety-six when we had construction going along four oh seven, and our businesses wanted to be informed as to what was taking place with the construction, and so we started having events to provide updates to them. Since that time, the HVBA has grown, and our mission is similar to that of other chambers of commerce. It's to promote business networking, do promotion for our local businesses, and connect them to our residents. So over the last several years, the way we do that is through our Harley luncheons, our quarterly community coffees, we promote our local businesses with video production, sharing on social media, we have the HVBA website, we send out newsletters. So that's, that's how we serve that purpose. So at one of our events, we were approached by our resident here Conrad Schmidt, who's an HVBA member, and he and his partners, Cobus Bedenhorst and Dries Snoot, offered to do a survey for us at no charge. So we had a meeting with them and learned about their company and what they do, and we were impressed with their abilities and decided to move forward with that. So we developed the survey, you all had a chance to take the survey before we shared it with our residents, and that was out for about a month for the community to take the survey. And then Conrad and the folks at New Way Insight analyzed the data and have come up with the presentation that we're gonna give to you now and some recommendations. So I'm gonna turn it over to Conrad, and then we'll have his partners present. At the end of their presentation, I'll come back up, and we have some action items that we plan to do based on the recommendations from the survey, and then we can take some questions along the way as well. So they're with us via Teams, Conrad is, is here.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Conrad Smith. I am co-founder and director of New Way Insight. This is my partners, Dr. Dries Knut and Cobus Bodenhorst. And we run a market research company. And we came to Lori and said, well, we're willing to do something for you guys to kind of give back to the community. So without further ado, let me just start with a quick discussion of our agenda. And Dries, let me just ask, are you guys going to share the presentation?
Yes, I can share that.
Okay. To start a quick discussion on our agenda, first, we're just going to do a quick project background. Then we'll discuss sample distribution and demographics. And then we'll get into our results by, you know, through the lens of current state and future state. And then we'll discuss some conclusions and recommendations. Next slide, please. All right. First, the research process, I thought I'll just step you guys through quickly on the process that we use. First off, we do a questionnaire design through desk research and workshops with the HVBA leadership. Then we do online data collection with the residents through that questionnaire. We do qualitative and quantitative analysis of the data. And then we present the results through various workshops and presentations to the leadership. Next slide, please. All right. Our overall goals, our overall goals is to drive our residents to shop locally so that businesses can thrive, offer our residents what they want to improve their quality of life, and of course, understand how Highland Village Business Association can support our local businesses. Now, research objectives, we set out to understand or to investigate the needs and preferences of our residents and then to understand their current level of satisfaction with businesses and amenities in Highland Village. And then, of course, how can Highland Village and the businesses grow a culture of shop local? Next slide, please. All right. The results framework, we want to present the results to you guys against the framework of one current state where we're looking at the shopping habits, preferences, satisfaction and unmet needs of our residents. And that, of course, against the future state where residents' needs are met, increased shopping and local businesses thrive. And with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Knut to get into a little bit more detail on the results. And yeah, Dries.
Well, thanks, Conrad. Thanks, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Thanks for the opportunity to present the results to you. When we look at the current state, and I think, please stop me whenever you have some questions or when you want to discuss something. I think we can make it an interactive workshop if you see something that's of interest to you. So in terms of the current state, we'll have a look at the resident's shopping habits. We'll have a look at their reasons for shopping in Highland Village, their satisfaction with their current experiences, retailers, restaurants that they visit most, and then finally, what residents would like to see most and what they like the least. In terms of the future state, we want to focus on what would draw residents to shop in Highland Village, what motivates them to choose a retailer, what other businesses residents would like to see, and how to effectively communicate with residents and finally, how to improve residents' loyalty and increase their spend within Highland Village. Just in terms of a bit of background, the demographics and sample distribution, just so that we know who our target audience were. And you can see that we had a total of a thousand four hundred and eighty residents responding to the survey, which is a fantastic result in itself. It just shows that the residents are committed and entrenched in the community. And that, on a statistical level, provides us with a ninety-nine percent confidence level and a three percent error margin. So what the confidence level means is if you have to repeat this study again, the chances are ninety-nine percent that we are going to get the same results. And that just provides us with some trust in the data and that you can really use the data to make decisions on. If you look at the distribution between the different areas, you can see twenty-six percent from the northwest, fourteen percent of responses from the northeast, twenty-three percent southwest, and then eighteen percent southeast. And eighteen percent of the respondents did not live in Highland Village. So we're not going to spend a lot of time on the demographics just to provide you with some overview of what does the population look like, who we spoke to. You can see the majority of the ages from thirty-five to about sixty-four. Majority responded with females, seventy-seven percent. And we can see in terms of their education, highly educated, which really reflects the population in Highland Village. If you look at those who have children living at home, so we can see that sixty-six percent have children living at home. And on the right-hand side, you can see the age distribution. I think this is quite important in terms of context. We are looking at residents which the majority of them have families, they, they have kids. And then we see that through the results as well, what they need is, is areas and activities for the entire family where the kids and the parents can do things together. Employment, you can see that the majority are employed, full-time employed, part-time employed or having their own businesses. And we then have fifteen percent who are retired and eleven percent who are staying at home and their partners work. If we look at the current state, let's get into that. So on the left-hand side, you can see, please indicate how often you make use of the following when doing your shopping. And we can see that the one that was chosen the most by residents is online with mail delivery. And you can see sixty-four percent of residents say that they do that quite often. And we see this in lots of studies that we do. I think post-COVID, people are so used to shopping online that it's almost become the law compared to where we previously probably did not shop online as much. You can see the second one, retailers in Highland Village, fifty percent say they shop there often. And thirty-three percent say that they shop there sometimes. And I think this is probably one of the areas that we would like to improve. We would like to see a larger percentage of our residents shopping in Highland Village. Retailers in Flower Mount, forty-four percent, and say often. And then the others are quite low percentages, online with a store pickup, retailers in Lewisville, in South Lake, and then retailers in Frisco Island. On the right-hand side, we also, how do you make use of the following modes of transport when doing your shopping in Highland Village? And we can see that drive to the location, seventy percent of residents indicated that they drive there. And although we would like to see these other modes of transport utilized more often, scooters, riding a golf cart, walking, or using something like Uber or Lyft, we can see that those are almost never used by residents. And everybody drives there with their own cars. And you will see that this in itself creates a bit of an issue. And we would like to change that and see some of these other modes of transport being used more often. Overall satisfactions, so when you look at residents' experience and customer experience, one of the things that provides us with a good indication of how good it is, is an overall satisfaction question. And this is something that's asked in most satisfaction surveys. The American Customer Satisfaction Index also asks this question. And we can see when we ask residents about their overall satisfaction, and this is a score, an index score out of a hundred. You can see that professional services are sixty-six, restaurants are sixty-five, small business is sixty-four, and retailers are sixty-one. And when we put that into perspective in terms of international standards, we can see there's sixty-six is here in the moderate satisfaction level. And we would, would have expected and would like to see overall satisfaction for the services, restaurants, and businesses in Highland Village to be in the seventy range. We would have liked to see it in the above eighty range. So immediately, this tells us something that it is not where it could be and that there is some room for improvement. If we look at some of the industry leaders in terms of overall satisfaction, you can see places like Chick-fil-A, TJ Maxx, they score in the high eighties. And this is where you really want to be. The Cheesecake Factory, Walmart at a seventy, and then Ottoman TV on a sixty. And you would like to see more of these scores in the seventies or in the eighties, which is an industry leader class. If we then look at where that overall satisfaction comes from and what it drives, you can see we asked how much you agree or disagree with the following statements. You can see, I feel a sense of pride living in Highland Village. And sixty-seven percent of our residents gave a top box score. In other words, they highly agree with that statement. We support Highland Village businesses where we can. Again, fifty percent agree with that. And then we see that the, the percentage of residents that agree with the rest of our statements declined as we go further. So Highland Village is where we eat out most. And now we see that forty-eight percent of our residents indicate that that is not what they do. So they eat out in other areas and not in Highland Village. And Highland Village is where we do most of our shopping. You can see fifty-three percent of residents disagree with that. And there is sufficient variety of businesses in Highland Village. And this is our first clue in terms of the low overall satisfaction score that we see. Residents eat out in other places, they shop in other places, and they don't feel there's enough variety. On the, on the one hand, these results are great in the sense that you can see the emotional connection that residents have with Highland Village. They feel a sense of pride and they would like to support. And that is a great result in terms of the commitment and from residents. But what we see is that there is some areas that we can improve on further. Any comments before we continue with this? Please go ahead.
Um, when you look at other bedroom communities that are primarily bedroom communities, we're not heavy commercial. Are these perceptions and behaviors similar to a city of our size with, um, that's why I think a lot of people are proud to live in Highland Village, is we're pretty much a bedroom community? So how is it compared to other like cities?
Yes. So we haven't done exactly the same survey in, in other areas. It's something that we are investigating to do to try and almost create a benchmark for that. But I think the benchmark that we touched on is the American Customer Satisfaction Index, which is a national barometer. But yes, we haven't done it into this, in this detail for, for other areas.
I had, I had a question about that barometer, if you can go back to it. So I can see where you want to be. Where we are, how does it compare to what national data shows?
Yes. So in the national data, they, they are literally hundreds of restaurants and shops and types of businesses that are measured. And it, and it really depends on the type of retail business that you have. But again, it is, on a, on a national level, we did not look at specific shops within Highland Village. This was just to try and give an indication of what are some of the scores that some of the bigger-known brands achieve. And just to indicate that there is room for improvement when we look at the restaurants and retailers within Highland Village.
Thank you.
Right. If we look at the, who are the top three most frequented retailers and restaurants, we can see Walmart, Whole Foods, TJ Maxx, Barton, Bodyworks receiving the most mentions. The top restaurants, Hillside, Blue Goose, Torches, Rosa's Cafe, Lambies, and Sip and Saber. And then in Flower Mount, it's Target, Lowe's, Tom Thumb, and Hobby Lobby. And these are just as an indication of what are the types of shops that residents visit most. Then we asked them what they like the most and what they like the least about shopping in Highland Village. And we can see that convenience, proximity, the atmosphere, and local support received the highest number of mentions. Some are satisfied with the variety, although not as many mentions as we would have liked. And then when we look at what they like the least, you can see the variety, the traffic, the parking, the shopping. And when you do this type of research, you want to see correlations between different questions. And this was an open-ended question, which we then categorized. And you can see this variety correlates with what we saw in the previous slide where residents indicated that the variety is one of the things that is lacking and that is the, the aspect that scored the lowest. So we can see that, we see this correlation between different types of questions in the survey. And that really just strengthens the, the insight that we gained from that. Traffic, seventeen percent of residents indicated that's one of the things they like the least. And there's some fantastic verbatim about intersections and roads that, that is an issue for them. And we can share that with you as well. It is part of the detailed report. Parking, ten percent. So these are probably the main three aspects that residents indicated that they like the least. It's the lack of variety and the traffic and the parking.
I'm going to say, you said that there were some comments that were, that were submitted along with those answers, is that right?
Correct. So these were verbatim questions. So it was an open-ended question where they asked them what they liked the least. And when they talked about the traffic, for instance, there were specific intersections that they talked about, specific roads that they talked about. And we then categorized that comment as traffic. But the detail that sits behind those comments are available.
On the parking, was it a lack of parking?
Correct.
Okay.
If we then pull this back to, to our first demographic slide where we saw that the majority of residents drive to, to the shops with their vehicles, then it starts making sense that the traffic and the parking can be an issue sometimes. Specifically in the comments, specifically in peak times where there's, some residents say during peak hours, they just try to avoid the area because of the traffic congestion. So if we look at the future state, what it is that we would like to change, attractions to shop local, so please rank the following factors in terms of how much they would draw you to support and shop local. You can see that we just categorized in terms of the ranks. So you can see outdoor eating area, thirty-four percent of residents ranked that as the number one thing that would attract them to shop local. And a ranking, a second-place ranking of twenty-one percent. Farmer's Market also. Farmer's Market also, um, almost very similar to the outdoor eating area in terms of attracting residents. Food trucks, um, then you can see that the the other options that we have received less and less first mentions, uh, food trucks, eighty-one overall. Outdoor concerts, seventy-eight. Games of competitions and then joint events with businesses. You can really see from this analysis that the outdoor eating areas, the farmer's market, things like that is something that would really attract residents. Motivating factors to choose a specific retailer. Again, we see the convenience, um, which is something that we picked up in the open-ended verbatims as well. Uh, the proximity to home, again. The variety of products um is one of the motivating factors. You can see that's the third most important aspect that would drive them. Although we see from the previous results that that is something that is lacking. Uh, looking for specific brands or specific products, uh, staff courtesy and and conduct. So really looking at the experience when they shop, the shopping experience itself, uh, supporting local, and then the relationship with the owner or the business received um quite a low percentage of mentions. So really the convenience, the proximity, and variety are the three things that is the most important for residents and would motivate them to shop in Highland Village instead of other places. If we look at loyalty constructs, uh, we asked residents three things. Uh, the continued shopping at Highland Village, the likelihood to recommend Highland Village to friends and family, and then whether they would increase their shopping at businesses. And you can see that these scores are quite high, especially continued supporting and recommendation. Um, those, that is really where you want to see these type of results. And this is where we start to see the disconnect between satisfaction and the loyalty constructs. So they are less satisfied than what we would have hoped, but we can see that they are still extremely loyal. They will continue supporting, they would recommend. Um, on the right-hand side, we just show the distribution and scores. The recommendation um question again is something that is also included in the American Customer Satisfaction Index. It's it's a benchmark measure. Um, and you can see it's it's called the NPS, the likelihood to recommend. You can see that the way it's calculated is you take the percentage of promoters, so there's fifty-five percent. You subtract the seventeen percent attractors, and then you get an NPS score of thirty-eight percent, which is an international benchmark for loyalty. And you can see on the right-hand side in terms of an international classification that a thirty-eight percent is a a very good score. So what we see is that residents are loyal, they love shopping there, and they would recommend it to friends and family, which is a very nice result um to show the loyalty of members. Although we saw that the satisfaction is a bit lower than what we see, you can see that they are emotionally entrenched in in the area and they uh would continue supporting and recommending it. Shops that you would like to see, um, so again, this is something that we categorized. So we asked residents, they named specific shops, and we will share that with you now. You can see grocery retail, uh, the majority of then clothing, restaurants, uh, department stores, and then home furniture, specialty retail, consumer electronics, bookstore retail. So a lot of detail behind um this result. We just tried to summarize it for you to indicate what are the things that residents would like to see most of. We look at some of the specific details, and I think we have to look at all of these. You can see something like Trader Joe's, uh, thirty-six percent of residents indicated that's a shop that they would like to see. HEB, fourteen percent, Lululemon, ten percent, uh, Nordstrom, seven percent, Central Market, again, seven percent, and then uh the percentages um decline from there. A number of mentions about chicken um restaurants or takeaways, same with tacos and fish. Um, but just an overview of some of the most mentions um that the residents gave us. Information sources, so where do you receive most of your information about Highland Village? And you can see friends and word of mouth uh being the most important, which brings us back to our loyalty results where we asked about recommendation. And you can see that recommendation is um one of the most important things that we need to get right. So satisfying residents who use the amenities so that they can then recommend it again to friends and family. Uh, the Cross Timbers Gazette, uh, the Facebook page, the Impact Newsletter, um, the Highland Village Facebook page, the Nextdoor app, um, the Flower Mount Theater Instagram page, and then Highland Village Business Association website. But you can really see the strength of, and 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 the recommendation is about trust. So if you trust um somebody else and their opinion, it carries a lot of weight. And that is why it's quite important to to get that right, to make sure that residents are satisfied so that then they can then recommend it uh to other areas. And finally, just some uh summary and some recommendations. So what we see is fifty-five percent of residents indicated that they shop in Highland Village often or always. Thirty-three percent sometimes, and ten percent say they sh- they should never shop in Highland Village. Fifty percent of residents indicated that they also shop in Flower Mount. So what we try to do is we try to decrease this percent, ten percent, move these residents into sometimes, and this thirty-three percent residents who indicated that they shop sometimes, we want them to shop always um in Highland Village. How they get there, ninety-six percent indicate that they they drive there. Seventy percent said always, and nineteen percent indicated that they often drive uh to the business area. How satisfied they are. And this seventy-five percent who's on the moderate satisfaction level, it is this group of residents that we would like to see increase their satisfaction so that we have a large percentage of residents that are extremely satisfied uh with um the businesses in Highland Village. And just in terms of a summary, we can see that a a sense of pride being in Highland Village, the recommendation and supporting. So we see very positive results in terms of their attitude, uh, their commitment, and their entrenchment in the local community. But when we look at their behavior, um, eat out most, shop most, and increase their shopping are the areas that scored a bit lower. So while the intention is there, and they 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 are pride to be associated with Highland Village, we don't see that reflected in their behavior that much. So this disconnect is something that we would try to improve on. Right, so how do we change some of these negatives into positives? So what we saw in terms of things that they like were the convenience, the proximity, the supporting local, the atmosphere. The dislikes is the insufficient variety, the traffic, the parking, and general shopping. And it's almost as if these aspects are are starting to overshadow the likes. If there's not enough variety, there's not enough traffic, there's not enough parking, then it impacts the convenience and the proximity. So we try to show that by uh doing uh animation. So one of the things that we want to do is we want to attract more residents. We want to keep them shopping local, and then we want to grow them in terms of um how much they shop. So think mobility, uh, so focus on other modes of transport. That is something that can ease the congestion and also address the parking issues. So if we can get residents to use some of these other modes of transport, it is going to impact on the two most important dislikes that they showed. Um, and address specific traffic issues. I think there are plans in place already to address some of those traffic issues and then find additional parking solutions, which is something um that residents also mentioned. How to keep them, I think atmospheres, uh, make it spectacular. You have to look at the ambience, the aesthetics, the attractiveness, the outdoor, the nature, the beauty is something that residents wanted. There were quite a number of um comments saying that previously it was outdoorsy and nature, and because of all the shops now, you've almost lost some of that outdoor ambiance. And that is why in in the rep- in the suggestions, we also see that they want outdoor eating areas, they want outdoor facilities, they want something that's special and memorable and create relevant experiences. So we see that residents indicated that they want family areas, they want young adult areas, and entertainment for for teenagers. So really something, this um links quite well to the previous discussion about um the courts uh that you want to build. I think we see that everywhere where some of the tennis courts are being converted into something that the whole family can use. And then finally, how do we grow? And that is, two things is quite important, and the one is is the variety. So trying to be different or diverse, um, trying to bring things in that has a bit more variety. A lot of residents indicated that we see a lot of shops that was the similar type of restaurants, the similar type of shops, and that we need a bit more variety. And then uh the second part of that is is creating more value. So the importance of something that's useful and something that the residents can um benefit from. If we then translate these um to to specific actions, um, the four-seven village connection trail to provide means for other modes of transport and the intersection, uh, so this intersection.
I was gonna, I was gonna talk a little bit to these items here.
Please do.
You're just on a roll. So we, I really appreciate the the what you've done so far for us and the recommendations. So when we looked at these, the data that we found in the recommendations and just looking at what we can do now, these are some steps that we can take uh going forward. So based on getting residents to our local businesses and thinking mobility, we know that we've planned the four oh seven village connection trail. Um, and that will provide those other modes of transport for our residents, so that is in the works. And then, or in the future works, actually. And then we know in the works is the intersection improvements at four oh seven and twenty-four ninety-nine, which we know will relieve some of the congestion in that area as well. Um, and then that next box, Dries, the um thinking atmosphere, kind of trying to um make it spectacular. We need to really think about uh sharing these results with our residents. They took the time, over nearly fifteen hundred people took the time to take this survey, so we want to share the results with them. And also with our Highland Village businesses and the HVBA members and our retail center, property management companies, and our owners, so that they understand what our community is thinking and what they possibly could do to meet some of these unmet needs. And then when we engage with them, you know, there's the possibility of of regular meetings uh with them to talk about options and and what what they might be looking at in the future. And then also looking at um how we can grow them or grow our businesses. And we want to continue our HVBA promotion efforts. Uh, we've really seen some growth in our social media channels. We've just redesigned our website, and we'll be pushing out um kind of the what's new and coming to Highland Village. So when people are looking for, hey, what's that that's being constructed over there? We hope that the word of mouth then will be, go look at the HVBA website and you'll find that information, or sign up for their newsletter, or look on their social media channel. So we know that from the survey that word of mouth was the top way that people got their information. And so we want to try to play to that. And then we also know that uh Cross Timbers Gazette and some of the social media channels are where they're receiving information also. So we will work to push information to those sites, but then draw them back to our sites so that they know this is where I go for this, the true source of information. So that's uh that's some things that we can do right now. And then I think, uh, Dries, if you had anything else or any other questions from anybody?
Also, just maybe a last comment. I think these are great results. As soon as you have residents who feel committed and who feel passionate about where they live, um, that attitude is probably the most important. We can work on some of the other things. Um, but as soon as they have that emotional connection to the area that they live, I think that's a great result. And and just, this is a summary report. So the full report is available with a lot more detail and a lot of the verbatim comments of residents. Uh, we just tried to summarize it uh for today's session, but the full report is available with with some more details.
Counsel, any questions?
I think I'm very, very impressed with the report. I think the fact that we're a small city, there's a certain amount of things that we can offer. We're in the middle of a metroplex, but if we did a circle around here as far as, you know, five miles, you know, circumference, ten mile circumference, you can see the amount of shopping that's available. You know, you'll see that where people go, they're they're gonna go to Legacy. Okay, they may not go down to Willow Bend, they're gonna go to Stonebriar. So there's a lot that they can get close without feeling disloyal to what we have. I go to Lowe's, it's Flower Mount. I mean, I come in Lowe's once a day. Notice there were seventy-five percent women responding versus seventy-five percent men.
Should I have the survey at the Lowe, the guy with the QR code at Lowe?
I've seen John at Lowe's three times, I believe, so.
But I know, I I think it's great, and I mean, it's it's gonna be a lot for us to digest. But I I think it's it's something we haven't done as a city. I haven't seen this ever, and I like what I see.
I would mention, just to thank Conrad and 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 Dries and Kovas for doing this. Uh, what time is it where you guys are right now?
Uh, two o'clock in the morning.
We we thank you for your commitment, but it's uh, we've had a lot of Zoom meetings, Zoom calls, going through some of these details. And uh they've been excellent to work with, and as we see these results, and John, I agree, it's it's very impressive. And some surprises in there, some not so surprised. Uh, I think the loyalty, I I think that just speaks to the fabric of this community and and how people feel about Highland Village. I think kind of the, Rhonda's point, she's asking the questions. Um, a little surprised though about the kind of eh about some of the things, but but there's certainly room for improvement there.
Yeah, it's consistent with what I hear, you know, when talking to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and get some sleep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Spending time with you, have a good one.
There's a lot of people too that think because it's called the Highland Shopping Center, we're targeting all of it, that that's Highland Village. So there's a lot of people that think.
Yes, yeah. All right, anything else before we move on?
Just the the one comment on the one store that was fought over tooth and nail twelve, fourteen years ago is the number one shopping destination.
Yes.
Sales tax generator too.
Yeah.
What can I say?
Um, so moving on, item number three is receive an update on the twenty twenty-three annual board and commission appointments. Ms. Miller will present.
So, um, this is kind of a short presentation. Um, it is that time of year where council will start to consider board and commission appointments. So uh with that, uh, we do accept applications all throughout the year. However, the few months leading up to the annual appointments, we do work with our marketing and communications staff um to do a call for volunteers um to submit new applications, just to try to generate more people to have to review and consider. Um, applications can be submitted online through our city's website, or they can also be submitted in person at the city secretary's office. In order to qualify to be a a board and commission member, you have to live in Highland Village and be a a registered voter of the city. Over the past few months, we have worked, um, like I said, we've worked with marketing and communications. We've actually had a pretty good turnout this year, more so than we've had in in recent years, I would say. Along with the um new. Along with the new applications received, we have also contacted the currently serving board members to see if they are interested in serving again, maybe moving to a different board, or if they just need to take a step back. We do have term limits, so we do have a couple that have termed out this year, this is their last year to serve. But with that, we do try to look to the currently serving members, especially even the new, I'm sorry, not the new, the alternate, people serving in alternate positions, because it's an opportunity to, when you do appoint us, to maybe consider them if you have a regular position to fill. So with that, this year we received a total of thirty two applications made up of the new applicants as well as the currently serving members. There are eighteen positions with terms that expire this September. So staff has compiled all of the applications for your review, which is in the notebooks that have been provided. We do have kind of an overall, I've included a copy of the briefing from the agenda packet and a couple of charts that may be helpful to you as you review all of this. There's a listing of all of the board and commissions that we currently have with all the positions on there with currently serving board members as well as, that list out the currently serving members along with their, when they were originally appointed, and then also the terms that expire, some this year, some not, because they're staggered. So the ones that expire this year, those are highlighted in yellow for you. We also included a list that shows the new applicants. We try to get them, the new applicants, to show us their choices for each board, because sometimes what happens is you may have a board where, you know, different interests, different backgrounds for people. So maybe they are interested in this board, but their background is really good on another board. Is this something that they would consider? So we try to have those applicants rate their choices of boards as for a second, third choice. So there's a table within those notebooks there that includes that. And there's also one for the currently serving board members, because some of them do wish to move to another board or stay on the same board, so that information is all included for the whole. We also have included attendance reports for each of the board members that are currently serving. Per city ordinance, members may not miss more than three consecutive meetings and shall not miss more than twenty five percent of the regular meetings during the single year. So all of that information has been included in your notebooks. So as of right now, we've got a meet and greet scheduled for September twelfth, which will be the next council meeting. This will give council and the applicants an opportunity to meet face to face, ask questions. We, in years past, we have not included the currently serving board members. However, if there's any of them that you would like to reach out to, you will have their contact information within your information provided. We do have a large number of new applicants. We will probably need to start that meeting at five thirty, just having enough time to get through the meet and greet. And it'll be a similar format to last year. So with that, appointments will then be discussed during the regular session with all the appointments made during the regular council meeting scheduled for September twelfth. So if you have any questions, if you look in the notebooks and find any information that you've got a question about or whatever, feel free to reach out to me and try to help us.
Any questions?
Take the books with us.
Take them with you, yes. Please bring them back for the meet and greet, because it will be good reference material through the, during the meet and greet.
Nothing else, move on to number, item number four. Give a presentation, discuss short term and single family rental registration program, Mr. Stevens.
Mary, counsel, I'd sent some information out a while back on short term rentals, and this is a little more in depth, and then also some information about a single family residential program. So just to give a basic definition, the short term rental is a residential property that's rented wholly or partly for a fee for a period not longer than thirty consecutive days. Of course, Airbnb and Verbo are the most common platforms, and there's some others out there as well. We've heard a lot about the legal rulings and what cities can and can't do. We have heard about different lawsuits, when cities have done certain things. But these are some of the legal rulings right now as far as really providing guidance for what cities can do. In twenty twenty one, Zatari versus City of Austin stated that the city may not prohibit or ban short term rentals. Draper versus City of Arlington, the city may adopt reasonable regulations that are backed by evidence showing the regulations serve to protect the health, safety, and welfare of renters and other citizens. And then there was another case against City of Orleans, the city may not limit short term rentals to owner occupied residential properties. Now, HOAs are a little different. HOAs really have more authority than cities do when it comes to regulating short term rentals. There's been, well, more than these two cases, but these are kind of the ones that are really set precedence. The first, their state statute allows for a community association to adopt rules prohibiting short term rentals. Another one is amended or modified restrictive covenants may be enforced against owners who acquired the property before the amendment. And just to give you an idea, if you look at our city in Acreage, more than half of our city in the developed area is within an HOA. I don't know each one of those, what their rules are. There have been some court cases where you have to make sure that wording is very clear. There's been some challenges that way, but HOAs do have more authority than cities. So right now, and I've done my best on Airbnb and Verbo to look, I counted eleven properties right now. If you remember when I sent you all the information, I sent that out the middle of July, and we had a few code enforcement issues, a few calls to the police department. The past month, so far, been fine. One thing that I talked to Chief Rhyme about, we could actually, on our dispatch system, we could flag all the short term rentals, which would give us a record of how many calls may be coming in. If we have a troubled spot, we could, we could take a look at it that way and possibly address it that way.
What is the distribution of those eleven in the city?
Uh, it's mainly to the, the south. Starting at four oh seven, coming this way, you've got one on Selmar, you've got one on Paro that just popped up. There's another street over there, right here by City Hall on Patricia, you've got two. You've got one over on Scenic, one in that same area over there, but that's all kind of the concentrated area right there.
Primarily the older.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I'm curious that eleven seems low in the current economic environment, especially with these PRBOs, especially being Lake. Eleven seems low. The curiosity is how they're spread out through the city and the length of time these properties have been owned as investment properties.
Yeah, we could do some further research to find that out.
So, I'd like to interject, some of the rentals list Louisville, they don't show you the actual city they're in.
Yeah.
And I know there's more than eleven on my side of town. So because of our zip code, there is, there's a few more than that. And I mean, I love the five o'clock motorcycle rally coming by my house at five in the morning, it's awesome.
Yeah, there probably are more. There's, there's two other newer apps that are out there that people can use. And if you do go to either one of those sites and you pull up a map and you enter Highland Village, they'll pop up, they'll kind of show a price tag here and there. Those price tags where it's supposed to be is not real specific. So I've taken pictures online, trying to figure out where they are. But yeah, there's, there's probably a few more out there for sure.
By definition, they don't have to be pure investment property. I mean, I could rent mine for a weekend because I'm gonna be gone, you know, classify as a VRBO.
Yeah, and there's been a couple, since I checked last month, there are a couple that I didn't find on there anymore. There are a couple that I, that are now new. There are some of those that are owned by a rental company or a management company, so you can clearly tell that's exactly what they're doing. Some others, it may be seasonal, maybe they're renting out when they're gone somewhere else, so a little bit of a mix, I'm sure.
There's potentially, there are one, more than one, short term rental that we have in Highland Village, where they converted to an apartment in a short term rental. This is where our, that's a health, safety, and welfare issue, because if the fire department doesn't know there's another resident in a short term rental, they don't know to look for them. You don't know what modifications have been made. And, and also with short term rentals, you don't know who's staying there. And we, with a lot of stuff coming up from the south, those houses, even if far around they find them, they're stashing people, and you go in and out. So having some way to register them, at least follow them, you don't know who, they could be quiet as a mouse, and of course, they're gonna be quiet if they're up to no good, right? But look at all the, and having families, short term rentals, they don't have, you don't know where the registered sex offenders are. So, I mean, I get everybody should be able to use their property, but there, there should be some kind of armor lanes.
So these are just some elements of short term rental regulations that some other cities have. Both of them have an annual registration and a fee you gotta do every year. You have to have a designated twenty four hour local emergency contact. The property must be maintained and is safe in a habitable, habitable condition. Habitable, habitable? Habitable, golly, maybe some more water there. And a lot of that does vary. Some of that with other cities is very specific, others, others have certain codes you gotta meet, things like that. You've gotta post the safety rules, posting of neighborhood rules, and then a revocation clause and appeals process. So the safety information, that's something that generally is put in the house for the person that's staying there. It's the contact information, how to get a hold of police and fire, floor plan for evacuation, fire extinguisher locations, occupant and guest limits, and then to have it there that there's no commercial events, meetings, or parties.
Can you go back to this? The last one, providing for a revocation clause and appeals process, explain that.
So I was at a seminar a while back, and the City of Arlington and the City of Mesquite did a presentation. Arlington went through a pretty, pretty big process to really develop their guidelines and to really specify where STRs could be, which was in the entertainment area. So when they did that, they wanted to make sure that there was a process where if there were so many complaints, you could revert, revoke their permit, and there'd be an appeals process. But that presentation was done, it was a couple of months ago. Arlington, I believe, had done two of those. One was revoked, they went away, the other, they appealed, but they lost the appeals.
So the top annual registration and fee parentheses permit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would that also include inspection?
Uh, that would, yeah.
Does. Do these companies, the big companies, VRBOs, do they, have they increased their regulation for the homeowners? And do they have any specific safety requirements that they require of the homeowners before they list them on their sites?
I'm not sure about Verbo. Airbnb has made it, they have a no party house policy now. That's listed, they've also been a little more proactive in trying to make sure that, that Airbnb homes in certain communities are well taken care of and things like that. They even provide some model ordinances and things like that. I believe you all received an email from Airbnb a while back, and I've reached out to that person, I didn't hear from them, but it at least appears that they're being a little more proactive as far as taking care of that issue.
Will we be the ones requiring any or additional fire extinguishers and things like that in the property?
If we could.
Airbnb or these other sites?
I'm not sure if they're that specific. I, I think we would probably have to be the ones to do that.
If we, if we provide permits, are we taking on any liability should something happen? So basically, if we're enforcing the fact that they have to post safety rules or that there is a, you know, a certain number of people that can say there, if something were to happen, do we have any potential liability? Because being permitted and approved them to use it that way?
That's a good question. I don't believe, I believe the answer would be no. But, you know, there again, that doesn't mean somebody won't point to us and say, well, you didn't enforce your ordinance, you didn't do the inspection on such and such day, so such and such happened, and therefore, the city's lumped in with homeowner, renters, they liable. More, you know, part of the spectrum of ordinances that we've been asked to work on for some of our cities, you know, have run anywhere from, we haven't had anybody request full prohibition because, basically because, as we've, as Paul's shown, you know, the strict prohibition is just, it's not being upheld, it's being challenged. And I think right now, that's gonna continue to be unsuccessful for cities to have those. So the next step up, rather than going into full regulation, would be just a registration. And so you get a registration process, so you're not really doing the inspections, but at least you're getting them registered to know where they are, who, who's the owners are, you know, get contact information and the like, make them pay a fee. I mean, you know, you can lose your registration, if you don't, if you're not registered and you can lose your registration, then, you know, for the kind of violations, then you, you know, complaints and whatnot, then you still get some, you can still put that kind of thing into respect to registration. And then, of course, then the next step up is do it more of a permitted but regulated and do the inspections. And so, you know, the extent of, of, you know, the policy decisions made by some of our other cities that have adopted them have kind of been based in part on, A, how many do we have? How big of a, how large are the resources we want to put into it, based on what we're gonna get out of it financially? You know, and part of that, how many do we have factors into the issue on parties, complaints, whatnot. And to some extent, you know, can some of those issues that we deal with on complaints, can they be handled in the same manner as we would handle with any other resident? Having a large party with, you know, police enforcement coming over at night because of the noise and tell them turn down, I mean, that kind of thing. So, because obviously, the kind of complaints you sometimes get with respect to short term rentals, you get with people with just regular rent houses. Or resident owners, I mean, that, if, you know, I mean, it's, it's the same kind of thing. So it doesn't, it, the only difference in short term rentals is the fact that they're only gonna be there for a day or two. And they're gone, and, you know, so enforcement's a little, little bit different as far as who you're enforcing against. But, but what's being enforced is the same as we do for any other residents where you have similar complaint.
So from a revenue perspective, is it just a standard eighty to quarter percent sales tax, or do we get hotel tax on these?
You can, if you don't, I'll get to that in just a, just a second.
Hey Paul, one quick thing to, to go off while we're still on legal ramifications. If someone rents out their house, we pass an ordinance to say, A, register fee, and they don't do it, they continue to the rent, and what?
Well, then we can, you know, then, and we find out about it, then we can cite them for doing so until they register.
The nice thing about that is it's easier to track than golf carts.
Because golf carts aren't, I mean, houses aren't going anywhere.
Right, you check, you check the Verbo and Airbnb website, you know who they are.
But, I mean, what, at what point does it, hey, I'm not registering, can't make me register, cite me, cite me, cite me. What, at what point does it start leveling up on what the city can do?
I think we can make them register, right?
We can make them register, we can find them in municipal court, we can bring them in. It's a, it's a, be treated as a zoning violation, therefore, it's a two thousand dollar a day fine if they're convicted. You know, some of it, you know, whether or not it gets to be big dollars is largely dependent on whether or not the judge is willing to accept those day by day, every day, continuous type of violations until they come in, you know, I've not talked to our judge, but, you know, if we were to do something like that, I don't know what typically our judge does with respect to continuing violations and complaints on a daily basis. But that's something you can do. And so it's, it just kind of depends, and, and of course, ultimately, it, it could be just a matter of also, you know, if you wanna go the extreme of filing injunctive action in district court, which is another option, expensive, a lot of attorney time, can take a while. So again, a lot of it gets down to, as I said, how many do you have? How big a problem is it really, is it really? And it varies from city to city. And, you know, what, how much in resource do you want to, you put towards that versus, and, you know, is, is the? and, you know, is, is, is it, is it one of those things you're willing to subsidize if the, if the revenue side from hotel motel tax and/or permit fees or license fees don't offset your enforcement costs? Um, you know, it's, it, you know, one thing I was, Paul and I were talking about earlier today, and we were kind of discussing this presentation, is one thing you've got to be careful of is you're not doing something that actually may create a situation where you're somewhat generating a, an incentive for more STRs coming in, because if you're, you know, especially on the generation of hotel motel tax, because Highland Village has no hotels, motels. So any beds, heads and beds are going to be going to neighboring cities, uh, or to more STRs that pop up in town when you're, you're trying to spend money to promote events in town with the hotel motel tax, which is about, which Paul's going to talk about, but is, you know, has a limited use, uh, restricted use once you can use it for.
I have another legal question. Can we, um, require them to carry some type of insurance? And I say this because my street, we had a short-term rental with a dangerous dog. Neighbors couldn't get their yard mowed, went after some little kids.
Mm-hmm.
That's a problem.
Well, again, but that, I have to go back and see some of the ordinances we've looked at. I think if you're going to get into more of the regulating as opposed to registration, yes, you probably could do that. But there again, the, you know, we, we don't do that for our own residents or for those who are in long-term rentals.
But if you own your property as a resident, there's somebody to go after, the property to go after. Short-term people and their dogs, if they rip off a kid's finger or arm, they're gone.
No. And that's something we would have to, I have to look at that. Um, but again, it's, it would probably be the renter that we would have, I mean, the owner that we would be going against anyway. Um, and of course, as you're aware, there's all sorts of, you know, when you talk about dangerous dogs, it's a particular topic, you know, there's all sorts of other things, that's totally, we've got to jump through on, on those kinds of things.
It wasn't, it was a little, it wasn't the, that kind of dog.
Yeah.
But I have family members that are this high that don't need to be chased by a dog.
I, I understand, I do too.
But that, that was my thing, is just insurance, and, and any program, any city adopts, should always be revenue neutral at the minimum.
Which, depending on the number of, you have, and maybe I, I'll tell you what, I'm going to stop, Paul's got more information on the revenue side of this. Just keep going on it.
Speed it up, too.
Yeah. So the neighborhood rules, that, that would also be posted in the short-term rental, I'm talking about noise requirements, trash requirements, parking requirements. Uh, the city of Mesquite, they require all of theirs to post the contact information at the front door of the house, so that way if a neighbor hears, hears a lot of noise and wants to complain, he can go up there and get the number, and he can, they can call themselves. Uh, there's a software tracking company called RentalScape, and this is a pretty slick software. This is just some of the things they can do. They can do compliance verification, address identification, they can do the tax collection for you on hotel motel tax, they can communicate with the host, they can do all sorts of maps and reports, and they even have an app for complaint management. Uh, so looking at, uh, short-term rentals, and, uh, when I talked to the person at RentalScape, they said generally people charge two, or cities charge $200 to $300 a year for, uh, the permit. So just estimating, if we had 13, $200 a year, that's $2,600. If we collected hotel motel tax at a rate of 6%, RentalScape said based on their data that there was probably $264,000 in revenue last year, so that would equate to just over $15,000. So that total revenue would be 18, $18,440. Now, the RentalScape, uh, reporting software, the, the base of it is identify, monitor, and reporting, that's $3,000. If you wanted them to do the hotel motel tax collection, that's $5,000. Uh, they have a registration renewal portal, so the owners go straight through that portal, they don't come to the city for their permits, that's $5,000. So if we were doing that, all those options would be $13,000. Now, the hotel occupancy tax, generally cities can charge up to 6%. There is all sorts of things in the legislation where other cities can charge more, uh, for convention visitors bureau, uh, to make, to pay for, uh, convention centers. The city, in order to adopt that, we would have to pass an ordinance and then notify the comptroller's office that we're doing that. One thing that's different about hotel motel tax compared to sales tax, it comes directly to the city. So we would have the same responsibility, if somebody's not paying, we would have the legal responsibility to go after that person. Uh, the revenue has to be used to promote tourism in the convention and hotel industry, and the use is limited to the following. I'm not going to read all of these, but some of these we would not, we would not qualify. But number three, advertising the city, as long as you're advertising the city, promoting tourism, usually you're okay. Most of those right there would apply to, to other cities specifically. That's kind of a quick rundown on that. Mayor, I've got a couple of slides on the single-family rental, if you want to do that afterwards, or?
Afterwards.
It's just a few that allow some time for discussion as well, so.
Do that. Um, so with that being the case, item number five is clarification of items on the consent action. Anybody down here, any questions or need clarification or anything? Yes, no, maybe?
No.
When we're done at 7:32, we'll see everybody in there in a few minutes.
Welcome to the regular session of Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, our city council meeting, today is Tuesday, August the 22nd, and the meeting is called to order at 7:40 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Um, please join Councilmember Kevin Cox in leading the prayer and the pledge.
Mr. Cox.
Let's all bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to, or come to you thankful that you've given us another day on this earth. We thank you for the opportunity to gather freely in this space tonight, Lord. I pray for our city's employees. I pray that you watch over our first responders, and I ask and pray that you watch over our military serving here and abroad. I pray over our city, our state, and our country, and ask that your grace and love reflect brightly over our entire world. Lord, we know the only perfect thing in this universe is you, so we cannot expect to be perfect, but we ask for your guidance down any path we take and in all that we do. We give you all the glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is mayor and council reports, um, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551 dash 0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to, uh, thank the Highland Village residents that attended the DCTA meeting last week, um, for the Highland Village train station. Uh, as a reminder, the DCTA will be working, having a workshop for the citizens this fall about planning, um, the station and the DCTA vision, so please check our website and social media for updates this fall.
Uh, the one thing I was going to report on is, uh, tomorrow, the 23rd, I'll be participating in the Second Annual Mayor's Pizza Cook-Off Challenge at Motor City Pizza in Lewisville. A bunch of area mayors are getting together. We've all picked a charity that we're supporting, that we're fundraising for. Charity I chose was the Children's Advocacy Center. Uh, if you want to, if anybody wants to donate, you can just either go to Children's Advocacy Center's website, they have a link for my fundraising effort on their site, um, and then on my mayor Facebook page, you can also go there and donate. Um, I know there've been some people who have so far, I don't know how much we've raised, but I think we're beating Mayor Gilmore, at least, in Lewisville. Um, so, uh, and beating Lewisville is all I really care about, so, anyway. Um, it ought to be a lot of fun, and, and the pizza I'm doing is going to be a Hawaiian-flavored pizza, so I'm looking forward to that. The other thing, uh, obviously, school has started, so again, as, as I said before, uh, please be mindful of school zones and the kids moving to and from school each day in mornings and afternoons. And then if you are sports fans, volleyball and football are starting up. Uh, I think First Varsity Action is this Friday night, uh, against Highland Park, so, um, please cheer on our local teams with that. Does anybody else have anything? Uh, I have a proclamation I'm going to do. I'm going to join our United Way president and CEO Gary Henderson and board member Nancy Rodens? Rodens, okay. This is your copy?
Thank you, sir.
You bet. So please join me, I'm going to do a proclamation here. Whereas United Way of Denton County empowers donors, volunteers, businesses, governments, nonprofits, and community groups to invest in their neighbors for a better Denton County community, and whereas United Way of Denton County works with a network of nonprofits across Denton County to address a variety of needs, including feeding those who face food insecurity, preparing children for success in school, work, and life, and connecting those in crisis with resources to stay in their homes, pay their bills, and find employment. And whereas United Way of Denton County has been identifying Denton County's needs and responding to them for 70 years, and whereas United Way of Denton County seeks to increase efficiencies and eliminate redundancies to better meet people's needs through collaborative programs to solve complex socioeconomic problems, and whereas United Way of Denton County continues to improve and transform lives across Denton County, now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Live United Month in the city of Highland Village. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I work at Caterpillar, and we're kicking off our big effort this week, too.
Tomorrow.
Yep.
I'll be up there tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I'll be in the, yeah, yeah, I'll be in the office, too.
We just want to thank city manager Stevens and his staff. They actually kick off their United Way campaign here at the city tomorrow, so thank you not only for this proclamation, but for making, supporting our community a priority at the city. Thank you, Mayor. And no offense, but Lynn Clark is United Way of Denton County, so you focus on Mayor Gilmore, and we're really rooting for Mayor Clark.
Mayor Clark's a good mayor.
He's wonderful, too.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, moving on to item number twelve, our- All right, so moving on to item number 12, or item number 11, visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors the opportunity to speak, the mayor may impose a three-minute limitation on any person addressing the city council, and there's a 30-minute time allotment set aside for this section if necessary. I've got a number of forms for people who did not wish to speak but wanted to register either their support or opposition to a certain item. We're going to, I'll bring those up, and then those who want to speak on a certain item on the agenda will hold those until that item. So at this time, we just have one form.
Public hearing versus...
Right, right. So, yeah, there's some for the public hearing, I'm going to hold those until we get there. So Jessica Esq., is she here?
Hi. Hi. I'm back. How are you guys?
How are you?
Good. I told Wes that I would come back and talk to you again. There's been another attack by a child on one of the domestic ducks that's living at the park. I think you guys kind of know from my last presentation that I've pretty much agreed to take the 30 domestic ducks on myself. I'm just, you know, obviously waiting for the vote on the permit to move the mallards before I kind of leave the area, because I just want to make sure they're safe. But I did tell Officer Fittis I'd come back and tell you what's happened, because this is the second malicious attack that has happened to one of the ducks in the park in the last month. I myself have spent $2,044 just on these two incidences, and fortunately, the sweet girl that I took to the vet yesterday, she was supposed to have to have a $2,600 wing amputation. That did not end up happening, because fortunately, she didn't have exposed bone like we thought, which leads to a septic animal. She has a deformity called angel wing, so what looked like a pokey-out wing for most of her life, a child like grabbed her and kind of ripped it off. So fortunately, she just has this angel wing deformity, and injury kind of just exacerbated that. I did tell, like I said, Officer Fittis I'd come here, because we were discussing that there's a lot of places in our wonderful nation where it's a city ordinance to fine people for attacking, harassing, terrorizing, chasing, throwing rock sets. Some of these things are very specifically listed in a lot of city ordinances. It's also a city ordinance in a lot of places to fine people for feeding bread and corn diets to ducks and waterfowl in a lot of places. Yesterday, while we were out trying to catch this duck for an hour together, two new ducks showed up, and they're young, sort of hybrid, probably six-month-old ducks that don't fly. One of them has the same deformity, and I talked to the vet about them, and she said definitely they were dumped. So people are going to continue to dump these animals out there, and they're going to continue to interbreed. We were just hoping that you guys could consider some additional things for the agenda when you take this to a vote. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 12, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, just a couple of items. First, I want to mention that the facility security upgrades are going well. The glass was installed, utility, excuse me, at Community Services this week. Municipal Court and Utility Building will follow. The crews are working to replace the water lines in the Village Estates area. That work has begun. We're waiting for the contractor to mobilize to do the sanitary sewer line replacement of Highland Village Road in Edgewood. And did want to mention, if you've driven by the old Chase Bank site, it has been demolished, and cleanup is occurring right now. Brakes Plus has their permits, so we would expect them to start construction of a new building shortly after the demolition's complete. And that is it.
All right. Chief Rime, I think you had something.
Thank you, Mayor. First-time event, Thursday night at Chick-fil-A. Numerous local law enforcement agencies, Flaramore, Lewisville, and some of the other surrounding smaller agencies like us, have been asked to participate with Chick-fil-A for a fundraising event. Fifteen percent of their sales that entire day will go to Special Olympics Texas. So if you know, that's near and dear for most of the police departments around here. If you have to eat that night, please go Chick-fil-A, and you'll see us, most of us rotating through there, and maybe a surprise appearance or two by Ali.
What night was that, again?
Thursday night.
Okay.
Thank you. It's all day, actually.
Okay. All day. All right. Thank you, chief. Moving on to consent agenda, all the items on consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from the agenda so that it can be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Those things on consent are item number 13, Consider Ordinance 2023-1304, Amending the Highland Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Offenses and Nuisances by Repealing Article 12.02, minors relating to the city's Juvenile Curfew Regulations. It's a second and final read. And then item number 14, Consider Ordinance 2023-1305, Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2022/2023 Budget. This is also a second and final read. Is there any discussion needed for any of these items? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm going to approve the item. Consent agenda.
All right. Motion to approve by Councilman Fierenza. Second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Hurst. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll post nay. Motion carries. On the action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so there's nothing to talk about there. Item number 16 is to conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2023-1306, approving amendments to the Plan Development Regulations applicable to Lot 1, Block A, the shops at Highland Village, said property being located in the Marketplace Plan Development Retail zoning district by amending the concept plan, illustrative plan, signage criteria, and other regulations to accommodate the construction of additional parking, drive landscaping, and signs. This is the first of two reads. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city has received an application to amend the site plan for the MPDR, Marketplace Plan Development District Retail, better known as the shops at Highland Village. The ordinance for the shops is regulated under 05984 and was amended in 2015 under ordinance 2015-1174, which changed out the exhibits for this area that we're going to discuss tonight. Scott Kern with KPS Development is here to do a presentation for the shops to go over this. Staff and the consultant worked this item with planning and zoning last week, August 15th, and it was voted three to two to move forward to council for consideration. And this item does require a public hearing. I would recommend letting KPS provide their presentation, in case there's any questions before opening the public hearing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kern with KPS Development.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ms. Scott said, I'm Scott Kern with KPS Development, based in Memphis, Tennessee. We're here on behalf of the owners of the shops to present this amendment regarding the South Courtyard. And let's see, at P&amp;Z, we had some technical difficulties. Let's see how this goes. Hey, it works. Okay. So just as kind of a reminder, this is the site plan that was approved April of 2015. This, this plan approved a one-way drive along with some improvements to the Southern Courtyard. This one-way drive was intended to service valet for this area. The next slide, again, this is just an aerial showing what the existing conditions are today. You can see this drive aisle, it's outlined with these bollards. And what we're proposing... This plan, and just to give a little bit of history on this, with the Barnes &amp; Noble lease expiration, the leasing team began looking at potential tenants to backfill this area. And the logical tenant mix was trying to find some restaurant tenants. So the leasing team went out to several restaurant tenants to backfill this Barnes &amp; Noble space, which has been, I think Barnes vacated in the last 60 days. And a lot of the feedback was, you know, more direct access from Cherry Creek as you enter the project, and more parking. I think the project has an abundance of parking, but it's out on the perimeter, and the rest of the shopping center has drive aisles that have head-in parking adjacent to all of the tenants, except for Ben &amp; Jerry's, which is on the North Courtyard, Lambo's and Tiff's Treats, Chico's and Soma, which are on the right side of the page. Chico's and Soma, they have a dual entrance. So we looked at this, and finally, as some of those deals passed on, The Cheesecake Factory came to the table and liked this idea, they liked the additional parking. We think that it's also, you know, past due to get some head-in parking for our restaurant tenant, Lambo's and Tiff's Treats here. So what you're looking at on the screen is you've got Lambo's right here on the left, Tiff's Treats below that, you have Chico's and Soma on the right side of the page, and this is the intersection of Cherry Creek, which right now comes to a three-way stop. What we're proposing is a drive aisle that extends through this area, up to and in front of the former Barnes &amp; Noble space, the future Cheesecake Factory space. Additionally, to the drive aisle, we're adding 20 parking spaces. There's two ADA spaces here, 20 spaces, and another six on the south end of this drive, Deer Creek. What this does is it provides some much-needed interior parking, which all of the tenants benefit from, having the convenience of being able to pull up in front of a retailer or restaurant. That's what's throughout the rest of the center, and we think that this is a valuable addition. One other thing to note is, as we looked at this, the previous space, I'm going to go back here. There we go. The previous courtyard was a lot of concrete and not much landscaping. So what we're proposing in this plan is to basically almost double the amount of landscaping in this area. And by landscaping, I mean plants, trees, true landscaping. So the current landscaping in this area is about 2,863 square feet. We are proposing 5,162 square feet, which is an increase of about 2,300. In addition to that, we're proposing a permanent stage. Lambo's frequently in the summer likes to have live music, so we decided to create, it's about a 265-square-foot stage area, it's a permanent stage where the musicians can set up and play music towards Lambo's and towards this green space that we've created just to the south of it. This green space is envisioned as kind of a game area where we could set up cornhole. There's some nice seating here. It's basically kind of commercial-grade patio furniture, so there's cushions on it as well as some benches. On the, on the right side of the screen, I keep flipping back to, so on the right side of the screen, we've added, you can see a lot more landscaping along here, as well as three 10-foot-by-10-foot cantilevered umbrellas to provide shade. We're going to add some chairs under there as well, in addition to some benches. And the zigzag lines that you see over the drive aisle is Festoon lighting, it's kind of those, the bulb lights, so those will hang over the drive aisle area. The lighting in this area will be better than it is currently, so we're reusing the six light poles that are already existing and then adding this lighting. So this is, this diagram's intended to show the amount of landscaping that exists and the amount that we're replacing it with. It's a pretty stark difference. We also think that this will help with these hot summer days. Landscape absorbs the heat better than concrete and doesn't radiate it. This is our furniture plan for this area, so again, we're showing, we call it soft seating, but you know, it's a commercial-grade, the equivalent of commercial-grade patio furniture. We're also adding these wooden benches. As we all know, in the summertime, metal benches can be unbearable to sit on, and wood will be a lot cooler than metal. And in the wintertime, when it's colder, wood's a lot more comfortable to sit on than metal. And this is the, an example of the cantilevered umbrellas. Again, these are 10 by 10. It's going to create quite a good amount of shade. Oops. One other thing that we kind of built into this plan, it's not really a cornerstone of this plan, but with the added traffic related to restaurants, we've created a valet program here. So there's seven parking spaces that on Fridays and Saturdays from 5 until closing, we have the option of providing valet service for all the restaurants. This is not for one restaurant in particular, this is for everybody to use. It doesn't even have to be restaurants. If, you know, you and your spouse decide to come here and just want a valet to go shopping, that's fine, too. It will be operated by a third-party valet company. So the idea is you'll come down Cherry Creek or from the east on Deer Creek, pull into this queue, and then you can see on the larger plan, this is where a valet will be parked during those valet times. When it's not being used for valet, these are public parking spaces open to any of the patrons. One other thing to note is, you know, this is, this is our current plan, this is what the management, property management, Ravi and his team, they give to all the tenants and say, look, your employees need to park in these lots. So we've pushed employees, you know, out to the outskirts, because the interior of the, of the project, those parking spaces are vital to our tenants. And this is only going to, we're only going to have more employees. Our current occupancy is about 78%, and by Q1 of 2024, that's expected to go up to 85%. And with some of the momentum that we've gained, you know, we've got a cheesecake lease that was just, Cheesecake Factory lease that was just executed, AMC Theaters just extended for another five years, and, you know, with this substantial investment of about $3.5 million in total, it's even more important to have parking spaces that are at the interior of the project, for, not only for the customers, but for our tenants. Having convenient parking spaces adjacent to these tenants is critical to their, to And as you know, special events are important to the calendar at the shops, and especially the Our Village Glows event, which is the Christmas tree lighting event, that will be moved from the South Courtyard to the North Courtyard. We've already met with the Christmas tree company, we have adequate space for it, so it will join the rest of these events that happen in the North Courtyard. Additionally, let me back up one second to this slide. I do want to talk about, speaking of special events, we do have the ability to close down this drive aisle eight times a year. this drive aisle eight times a year for three days. And this would be a great kind of central area for hosting the Highland Village Arts Festival. And frankly, the stage also has a dual purpose, whereas when the drive aisle's open, it kind of, it faces the tenants. Here, you could swing around to the other side and, you know, have music where, when this is closed, people can gather in the drive aisle. One other thing that we've looked at is this is the entrance off of Cherry Creek. And it's not particularly ceremonial. And with this plan, what we'll show you in the next rendering is we've created, once you get into the center, once you get into the shops, this kind of a more ceremonial, more grand entrance, once you get in. And that is this rendering here. So we're proposing, as you can see, the string lights across the drive aisle and this archway sign. It feels much more ceremonial as you enter in off of Cherry Creek. This next rendering shows the amenity space that we've created outside of Lambo's. So you can see this lawn area here for games. We put in cornhole. I mean, it could be, you know, any kind of lawn game. Additionally, at the stage area, when it's not in use, one of the things that's been very popular at some of the other centers that either we've developed or continue to manage is, you know, a giant-size Connect Four for the kids to play with, a giant Jenga. In fact, one of our tenants, Learning Express, said, "I have those in stock, so come see me when you're ready." But you can see, these are generous sidewalks. These are eight feet wide. And then this landscaping band, it obviously widens up here, but as it narrows down, it's about five feet wide. So from Lambo's patio to the edge of the curb is 13 feet, so very generous space. On the other side, we have a lot more room with the five-foot landscape strip plus another eight feet of seating and added landscape. We've got like 20 to 25 feet from the face of the building to the curb. So very wide, but now it's a lot more pedestrian-friendly in that it's lined with some landscaping. It's got some great areas of respite under these umbrellas with some comfortable seating. And then lastly, we have a bird's-eye view of this area. So you can see this is what it would look like at dusk or close to dusk. It's well-lit, vibrant space. And so we're asking the council to approve this. You know, it gives us great access. It pulls customers further into the core of the shopping center, provides much-needed parking adjacent to the retailers, and adds much-needed landscape in this area to replace that concrete, some great seating options, and some permanent amenity spaces. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so Scott, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, Council. To recap, the revisions that the applicant is asking for is to change the exhibit for the courtyard area to this exhibit that you're looking at now. Changing the phrase approximately 23% in the exhibit to approximately 22.5% as it refers to green space and common areas. Replacing the entire Exhibit D, the illustrated plan. The, adding the Exhibit H, Section 3, titled Center Identification Signs. Specifically, Section 7, one illuminated or non-illuminated gateway arc sign may be located north of the intersection of Waller Creek and Cherry Creek. And with that, we'll take any questions or you can open up the public hearing, Ms. Hurst.
Oh, sorry. I gotta, it's way I sit. So I understand that there's 0.5% prop, being removed, but in the zoning document, there's an Area C. What percentage of Area C is being removed?
Do we want, do we want to do the public hearing before council's questions?
Mayor, something you want to ask, have the applicant ask a question? I mean, it's not uncommon for the applicant or questions to be asked of the applicant regarding the presentation before the public hearing. It's up to you.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Rhonda.
Oh, I mean, I've got more, but this is just more clarification. So Area C, which is specifically in the current zoning document, I have somewhere in this hot mess, is these two spaces. So I did some math. How much are you taking out of those common, which I just want to also clarify, that in the zoning, this is called common area. I know we keep saying landscaping and all, but it's common area. So how much is that being removed?
So this specific area, the south courtyard, and again, I roughly approximated that to be 24,000 feet. And the drive aisle and parking is about 9,300 square feet. So that is about 38%.
And you're changing the use of this, of this area, correct? From a common space that doesn't allow parking, except for the periphery, to a parking lot with a drive aisle, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all the clarification I needed right now. I have more, but I'll wait.
Any other questions? Sorry.
Anybody else, questions?
Not yet.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions, Mayor, I'd recommend opening the public hearing.
All right. So before I open the public hearing, I just want to make sure we set some, we level-set a little bit. We've got some emails and speaker request forms where people indicated they did not want to speak, but they wanted to register either their support or their opposition. Rest assured, all these things will be entered into the record. If you want to speak during the public hearing, we need you to fill out a speaker's form so that we can make sure and record all that. I think Mrs. Miller already has a handful. When you do speak, as always, we just ask, you know, address the council and we'll go from there. And always, you know, let's make sure we do it the Highland Village way, which is, you know, kind, respectful, compassionate, and understanding, and seeking common ground. And then once we conclude the speaking portion and council gets involved in asking questions and so forth, if you'd have a question or something, you need to go back and get a speaker's form filled out, and we can entertain that afterwards. But we can't have a back-and-forth out loud, you know, like what happened last week. So anyway, those are some ground rules I just want to make sure we all adhere to. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:15. And I will call each of you up. Lori Hill. When you come up, please state your name and address for the record, too.
All right. My name is Lori Hill, and I live at 150 Village Estates. And I was at the session last week, and he didn't talk very much about the valet parking. I think that's one of the things that really bothers me is the valet parking. I have a couple concerns about it. Now, you see, the road is not very wide, okay? And you've got valet parking, you have people going both ways, right? And so people pull into the valet parking, and so then you've got this jam. And I know we addressed it last week, but I didn't really, I didn't talk last week, but I was thinking about it all week. And I think that that's going to cause a lot of headache for everybody, because basically they're going to be going, "Wait, we got to get these cars out because we've got to park them," right? Well, he didn't talk about where they were going to park these cars, because I don't know how many of you guys have ever been somewhere and there's valet parking and no one's using it, and you have all these spots that are empty, that are great parking spots that no one can use. So I heard, I think I heard him say seven. So that's not very many valet parking spots to service everybody in the parking thing. So I think the valet thing is not a real selling point. And also, you know, there's liability, too. You know, you give your keys to somebody and they're driving your car, and I have a stick. I don't want people driving my car. So I would never use it. But I just, I think that that's not a really good use of that. I think that's kind of a, there could be some liability also with the valet parking, plus the fact that, you know, there's a lot of spots right now because of COVID that are these to-go spots. So you're driving around, you can't even park in front of Lou Goose anymore because there's all these parking spots that are taken up by, no, this is reserved, you can't park here, you can't park there. So now we're going to have more of those spots. So we have 23 new spots, but then you got to take those seven away. So we really don't have 23 new spots on the weekend when it's really busy and everybody wants to go there. So that's just something I wanted you guys to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and Council, Jimmy Bassinger. I live at 210 Edgewood. I really don't have a lot of heartburn about this plan. I'm mainly considering the process. There's a lot of care, work, study, changes in city ordinance and everything when the shops were originally made and developed. And you worked with a developer and got those through, and we decided on a certain concept and resulted in the shops. Now we've got a new tenant, and we're going to change some of the concept there that would, even though the presentation was very nice, the drawings look nice and everything, and his, is talking about the amount of landscaping they're putting back in and everything is just so we have more green space maybe than we did before. However, the focus on this whole area was very pedestrian-oriented, and that was by design for the shops. And so my main concern is that, is that the city council, who's the ultimate decider in all of this, has put in the same amount of time that they did originally when they decided on this pedestrian-oriented feature at the shops. And now they're going to take it out and put more parking in there with an additional drive, two-way drive that looks to me crosses, when the valet is open, that two-way drive. If people come in from the south, they're going to be cutting across the east-west route at the top, right there in front of the Cheesecake Factory, like the lady said. That might cause a problem. Anyway, so I just, I hope that the council does study this. You know, y'all will be responsible for changing this. This is at a time when we're, we're working all through the city to increase the amount of pedestrian and alternate mini modes, micro-mobility, I think is what they called it. We're trying to increase the micro-mobility, and here we're taking some of it away in the shops. So for that reason, I'm against this change. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. The next one, I can't, honestly, I cannot read the last name, so I'm just going to say the first name, Vincent. I don't want to mess it up.
It's tough.
O'Toole, okay.
I'm Vince O'Toole. I lease the shops at Highland Village. And as it speaks to valet specifically, the discussions are to take the seven existing spaces. That's not addressing any of the new ones. So you understand, the existing north-side spaces during valet times only will be converted to a two-lane drop-off. Now, those patrons enter each of those two lanes similar to, if you have ever taken an airplane out of DFW Airport and seen their valet, there's the, you pull out right across the parking spaces. When they're not busy, the cars are head-in at an angle in those parking spaces and utilized when the valet is not there. It's designed to get them out of traffic, so there is a two-way traffic flow. That's the reason why we hired a traffic engineer and studied it with our Kimley Horn folks right over here to analyze that. As it relates, and my interest in the project is recruiting additional tenants besides securing Cheesecake Factory, which is under construction to the project, that it, this design enhances the flow of the center and creates a point of connection between the main entrance of the center and having to choose whether you go right or left and miss half of the shops, and then you end up back by the theater and you haven't seen three-quarters of the shopping center the way it's designed currently. As far as pedestrian flow, you do have ample wide sidewalks enhancing pedestrians' flow, although you're taking that existing concrete, I think it was 38%, Scott said, and you're going to stripe it down the middle essentially now. It's concrete now. It's going to, what we propose is spending $2 million of our own money for our project, not asking you for a penny, to enhance this development and create a more inviting shopping center to promote the businesses. And I've invited several business owners to speak tonight. So we believe, and we've seen it over and over in the shopping centers that we've, we've designed here in Texas, that I've been involved with, that you put those customers closer to the store and closer to that point of transaction, make those transactions easier for them. They shop more, they, the project ingrains itself in the habits of the consumer. They find it easier, more convenient to shop, and it enhances everything, including makes my job easier where I don't have to explain why is there no parking and where is all the parking? So that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jim Verforth. I live at 3124 Overlook Circle. I own Shoal Creek Tavern and Lambo's America Kitchen and Taps in the shops at Highland Village. I absolutely am excited about these changes. I'm excited about this landlord wanting to invest money into these shops to beautify the shops. That's a beautiful project, in my opinion. I have another restaurant down the street where the landlord doesn't invest anything into that shop, and they have a beautiful anchor tenant, Tom Thumb, so it is not a bad-looking shopping center at all. There's frozen bushes from two years ago they haven't ripped out. So for a landlord to continue to improve this center and want to bring in more customers and more tax dollars, I think we should be pinching ourselves as a city to be proud that somebody wants to take care of this center and do something with it. So that's the first thought I have to myself. Why are we fighting this opportunity for this wonderful improvement to refresh our city and make it look better? So that aside, I don't know of one tenant friend of mine that doesn't want more parking in this shopping center. Not one. We're begging for it. We'd love a parking garage on top of this. So, and then to have people park in front of my restaurant is a dream come true, because I don't have that right now. So this is going to be nothing but win-win. And right now, that courtyard that we all think is this wonderful pedestrian area is nothing but an attractive nuisance for teenagers at night that do nothing but vandalize it. Yes, young kids enjoy it with their families, but once those parents go away and the small, small, little green space that's beat-up astroturf because it's aged, those parents go away, it's nothing but teenagers that got dropped off by their parents that got abandoned, and it's nothing but torn-up furniture and vandalism. It's not that great. We think it's great, but we end up being the lifeguards and the patrol. And if their older parents are inside, they've abandoned them, and they're drinking, and those kids are outside terrorizing the real little kids that are out there playing. So I've been watching this since 2019, and that is really not what we all think it is as a community. as a community, as this wonderful place where all these kids are out there playing. The older kids are creating havoc and the younger kids are getting terrorized and their parents finally say, let's get out of here. And then the other parents, the older adults that are really enjoying themselves, want to leave because those middle teens are destroying the place. So I'm pretty happy with what's going on here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next one, I'm going to take a stab at the last name, Jennifer Koplinsky.
Correct. Jennifer Koplinsky, and I'm embarrassed here to say I live in Lantana at 8400 Linden Street in Lantana.
You can change that.
We moved into 2007 in Lantana and we immediately started shopping at the Brilliant Sky Toy Store that was one of the original tenants. In 2020, I had the opportunity to retire from my first career and wanted to serve our community. I opened the Learning Express Toy and Gift Store in the shops. It is across from Soma, right next to Victoria's Secret, if you haven't been there. And more recently, to serve a second, fill a second void in our community, I opened a children's clothing store on the other side of Victoria's Secret. My customers range from tweens and teens that do not drive, that are dropped off by their parents unsupervised, through every single generation to grandparents and great-grandparents. I will tell you that grandparents are my number-one shoppers in both of my stores. I'm in my stores since we opened in 2020, over 300 days a year. I make it a point to get to know my customers and to give back to my community. I have been able, through my customers purchasing in my stores, I have given to over 25 elementary schools in our local area, including all three schools in, elementary schools in Highland Village. I have sponsored things for the Children's Advocacy Center before and done donations. And when I speak with my customers, they tell me that they want to park in front of my stores. They tell me that they would like to have some shade to sit and enjoy the atmosphere. They're looking for the safety that the lights are going to provide at dusk and after the sun goes down, especially in the wintertime. So when I think about this opportunity and I think about my customers that I see on a daily basis, this is a wonderful opportunity for them. I know that it does have children playing outside. I was fortunate enough with one of the other, the Adventure Kids Play Care at the shops and in cooperation with the shops to co-sponsor the end-of-summer party that they had on the north side where the water section is. I'm used to the Christmas tree as everyone else is, but we got to do it on the water side this year when the children could play. And it was a wonderful opportunity to use that north side that I believe is underutilized for a play space. There's the ice cream store there. It is, it allowed us to set up more tents for the children. We provided arts and crafts, bubbles, the children played. There was seating for the parents on that side. So in my opinion, as a store owner, this is wonderful for me and my customers. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last one I have a Form 4, again, I'm going to take a stab at the last name and I think the first name is Eli or Ellie. Eli?
Hello, good evening. So my name is Eli, last name is Nassar, N-A-S-R.
I would never guess that.
Yeah, well, it's Nassar, Nassar for short, so I'm the owner of Nassar Jewelers and the shops. Been there since 2009 and been very happy. So I'm here to let you all know that I'm definitely in favor of the addition. I think it's going to be awesome, not only for the tenants, but it's going to be good for the customers. We get the complaint that there's no parking and, you know, it's hard, there's always circling around, but this will give them a chance to park and, you know, come shop with us. So definitely excited and for it, so that's all I wanted to say.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and again, we did get a number of submissions of folks that did not want to speak, as well as a number of emails, the copies of the emails have been provided to, to us and they'll also be entered into the record. Is there anybody else that has submitted a form since we started, Ms. Miller? Okay, so with that, we can close the public hearing? Yep. So we'll close the public hearing at 8:31, 8:32. Mr. Kristin, do you have anything else? Just saunter on up.
We'll take any questions.
All right, counsel. Ms. Freerenza.
Thank you first for the presentation and the comments that have been made. I think you answered four of my multiple questions already, so I appreciate that. Have you, well, let's go back to one of the questions. Does your, do your, does your research and your statistics bear out that this program that you've presented would ultimately satisfy the problem at hand, number one? And do you believe it would promote and create long-term sustainability for this area?
I do. I think it addresses the problem at hand of better circulation, more parking adjacent to the tenant spaces. You know, as we've, as we've heard, you know, some of the tenants talk about it, especially Jim who owns Lambo's, you know, having, I mean, that's what this, that's what this center is built on. And, you know, you look at the overall site plan, there is head-in parking everywhere. It's, it's what works, it's what our customers want and it's what our, you know, it's what our tenants want.
And respectfully, the original concept plan was for community and it was the, the open concept area for people to congregate and enjoy it with more landscape. And the initial plan, and this would be the third iteration.
Right.
Right? The initial had water feature in it, which I believe everybody I've spoken to really enjoyed. That didn't work out. They came with the second one. Obviously, that's not working out for the shops either. It is concrete, it's not natural grass.
Correct.
So what makes us think that this one's going to solve the actual problem?
Well, we do have this, this north courtyard that is what we believe is underutilized. And in fact, we're looking at that plan right now. How do we add better seating there? How do we add better landscape? I know that's not what we're talking about tonight, but that has a lot of opportunities. And that's about a 30,000 square foot space, it's enormous. And to kind of put that into perspective, and I spoke about this at planning and zoning, you know, one of the shopping centers, Lifestyle Center, very similar to this, that, that I worked on about 17 years ago, has a 120 by 120-foot kind of town square area. It's about 14,500 square feet and that is just packed full of activity. It has a splash pad, it has some raised seating. The splash pad is where the Christmas tree goes, it's where a stage gets set up for the summer concert series. It also has trellises that provide some shade, it has a Starbucks, it has a gazebo, and it's packed in a 15,000-square-foot area. The north courtyard is probably double that and probably only half of it is really fully realized as a, as a public space. So I think that what, what this addresses is, is it does provide what I think is, what we feel as a group and based on our experiences, it does provide a very pleasant pedestrian experience. You know, we do have these extremely wide sidewalks, landscaping, some, some great seating options, and it also provides this kind of gateway into the heart of the center and it, and it provides much-needed parking in this area.
If I, if I go back to the second iteration of this particular area, what we currently have, and I look at the drawings that have been provided us, the initial color drawing exhibited GB out of Attachment 3 from 2015, it appears that there's more trees in that area. It also shows a, a vehicle in that one side drive that obviously, since this was put in, has never been utilized. Why wasn't that utilized? Would that have solved some of the problem by adding that and the valet without creating additional traffic in the center? And then I'm not going to the idea of having parking in front of the shops, that's a different issue for me at this point. So I'm trying to establish why we have to do this again when we've tried two others.
Yeah, well, I would say that candidly, a lot has changed since 2015. Since 2020, as we all know, retail changed. We're seeing a lot more tenants shrink and we're also seeing that the one thing that is Amazon-proof, you know, no shade to Whole Foods, is dining experiences. Can't get that on Amazon. And so we're seeing a transition more towards restaurants, entertainment and experience and, you know, taking advantage of a great location where Barnes &amp; Noble was located, you know, when their lease expired and they went into a much smaller space, they were in 25,000 feet, they're now in less than 18,000. We're seeing a lot more tenants shrink their footprints and we're seeing a lot more tenants hesitant to expend capital. And so in order to bring, continue to bring the best and brightest of either nationals, locals or regionals, and, and we think the success of the shops is because we have a good mix of all those tenants, right? Locals, regionals and nationals. You know, things have changed and this is kind of the next evolution as we, you know, come out of those terrible, you know, 2020s.
The space that Barnes &amp; Noble has vacated.
Yes.
Is how much, how big is that space?
That was.
Total, 26,000.
26,000.
26,000.
So we have 16 left.
So this takes, the Cheesecake Factory takes up about 10,000.
They're taking 10, so you're going to have the other 16 will be split up for multiple shops or?
Potentially one. We have a prospect for one and two. Potentially one tenant is, is an active prospect.
That would take up the entire 16?
It would take up the entire 16 in kind of an L-shaped format. The other is 10 on the back, 6 on the front and.
Front, the front being facing this particular.
South facing. So you're looking at that. And to kind of expand on what Scott was saying and I think where you're going with the, the question, with the old plan versus the new, I used to work for Terry Montesi, so he'd always talk about integrating it, having traffic connect this side of the center where you are on the south side with the front of the Barnes &amp; Noble so you can get to the hub of the wheel essentially and integrate customers toward the center and have them spread out from there. I think the one-way sort of valet plan with those balusters was kind of halfway thought-through. It looked like a good idea. I can tell you from experience down in, in Houston and in a project in Memphis that I worked on, one ways do not work in a shopping center. They, they work for half the side where you can angle in on those parks and they create a lot of traffic jams and half of the tenants do well, the other don't. It's just a nightmare.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Vince.
Sure.
The other thing that I was concerned about, we've talked about the, the valet a lot. I've got a couple of other things I want to talk on, then I'll turn it over to anyone else that wants to speak, but concerning the landscaping, I keep looking at this and although we have an open concrete area currently with the first iteration being with a lot of trees that I don't see and what died doesn't get replaced, with this one, I see four awnings on the east side covering, and you said they were 10 by 10 roughly, covering seating areas, but I don't see anything between the two sets of awnings. So you see the, the two at the forefront, then you have an open space with nothing in it other than low landscaping. I think there's an opportunity here to add additional trees to create more of a natural center, create more shade that I'd like to see incorporated in this, as well as by the arch rendering that you have. There's flowers, it looks really nice, but I think there's an opportunity to add more trees and more, to get more shade, natural shade rather than awnings that eventually will break down and then we have to worry about them being replaced and et cetera, et cetera, right? So that's one issue for me. I know at the planning and zoning meeting, it was discussed, the, the discussion revolved around lighting directed at the patrons of the restaurant as they turn in.
The headlights, right?
Yes. That was a big concern. The, you, you talked about having natural barrier to, to stop that. Is that a better, better barrier or is it, would it be better to have one that mirrors the pony wall on the north side that separates the restaurant from the water feature?
I think in, and we've looked at that, we've looked at whether it's a pony wall or it's, you know, is there a creative ways to use some fence? We like the idea of the landscape just because that's part of our, the kind of reimagining of this area is, is, you know, utilizing more landscape. Again, for the kind of heat gain issues that we talked about earlier.
And that's why I'm addressing the trees, because it, there is, there's a lot of that.
Yeah.
And trees and more landscaping would provide some, some barrier and some absorption from that. So I'm not necessarily in favor of a pony wall, but I wanted to hear.
Yeah, so what, what we had looked at was some landscape shrubs. The other thing we need to keep in mind is we also have to have an area where people, you know, we don't want them to have hopping shrubs. So we have introduced, you know, some small concrete pathways from, from the parking area. But we, we did talk about, you know, shrubs along this area and maybe it's better if I go back to the plan. And this is something that we had, Jim had raised this with Lambo's and we had talked about that. And we agreed to that. Whoops, sorry. So in this, in this area here, you know, adding a, because that's a five-foot-wide band and if we added, you know, 18 inches or maybe 24 inches of some sort of, you know, evergreen shrub that would provide, one, it would block headlights and provides kind of a natural barrier. And we had also talked about it along the stage, although we're a little sensitive to the fact that, you know, the idea with the stage is that, you know, you're kind of playing to the, to Lambo's patrons and, and other people that may want to set up here. And then when we shut down the road, you turn and, you know, do we have a barrier there? But we also, we did talk about some sort of shrubs along the game area that separates it from the, from the parking area.
So we still have the opportunity for additional landscaping, trees and such on the other side of the drive.
You're talking about on the, on this side?
On that side as well, yes.
Yeah.
Those two areas don't have anything but low shrubs at this point.
That's correct, yeah. And some, and, and lawn as well as the umbrellas.
Yeah, right. And I believe the last issue that I wanted to address with you is the arch.
Yes.
The, I think it's a very nice feature and I think that was a great addition, but I'm questioning the placement of the arch for a couple of reasons. The first, the renderings show, and if you go to the rendering you have, you'll see what it, see it. This shows the arch between, is it Deer Creek at that, that stage?
Yes, so what you're looking at is you're on Cherry Creek.
Right.
Looking towards Deer Creek and you have. Looking towards Deer Creek, and you have Waller Creek.
Right. And that cross street is Deer Creek.
This cross street in the front here, in this rendering, this cross street here is Waller.
Waller, that's right, okay. So you have, you have the arch between Waller and the sidewalk?
Yes.
In the drawings that were presented, the arch is beyond the sidewalk.
Let me go back to that.
I don't think it shows here, on that one.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay.
So the question is, where in actuality are you planning on putting the arch?
Do you have the...
Behind the sidewalk.
And my apologies, the, so the arch actually sits behind the sidewalk, not in front of it as the render.
On the inside of the sidewalk.
That's right, yeah. So right, right there.
Okay.
Yep.
So the artist's rendering would be incorrect, then?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so then the main question for me, though, is you started the conversation with the arch, creating a gateway to this particular piece of the shops. Why would you not have that, since it does say Shops at Highland Village, why would you not have that at the primary entrances, either at 407 or 2499, that creates the whole of the shop and not just this one square within a shop?
Yeah, it's a great question, and one of the primary reasons for that is, as your, and I'm forgetting the, the street on the south that you enter off of Cherry Creek.
407.
407, yeah. So the only way to get in off of 407 is you make a right or a left. There's no head-on traffic?
There's cross-traffic from Flower Mount to that particular area.
Across that intersection?
Yes.
Okay, but that's not really...
Although challenging to get across, but it is...
Yeah, right, so that's not really the primary way that our customers will experience that archway, so you're going to be kind of approaching it parallel with it, versus in this location, you're going to be approaching it perpendicular. And we also have a sign there on the corner that identifies the project, it's a vertical monument sign. So we felt that, you know, this, this just kind of reinforces that you've arrived within the, within the center, and that it'll be seen, you know, because you're actually now approaching it perpendicular, versus making a left or right turn off of 407 where it'll be kind of lost on people, you'll be kind of coming in under it, not really see it. Yeah, I just don't think it'll make the impact that this sign location, this arch location will make.
Okay, well, I appreciate the time you took to answer the questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'm not sure, Robert or Rhonda, I'm not sure which one was first.
Rhonda.
Rhonda, go ahead.
Oh, well, I share the same concern, because this was the picture, it's pretty, lots of shade, that you said we were going to get, and we've had the same owner since 2014, yet this is what we have right now. And that's...
So the...
This was the rendering that we were promised in 2015.
I'm sorry.
This is what it looks like.
I think the rendering you showed me is, that's the north courtyard, isn't it?
I'm going to make sure, hold on.
Yeah.
No, that's the one that's got the right, nope, you're right. Sorry, wrong one, this one, sorry. But it's got a lot more shade and green space, but, and I was listening to the P&amp;Z meeting last week, and again, we've had the same owner since 2014, correct? And the owners say that there's been dead trees there, that there's not working amenities, so that's maintenance, and you're asking for this soft furnishing, these benches, which apparently we have a terrorizing teenager problem, too. So what is the maintenance? What, what, what security do we have on the third time around that they're actually going to maintain things? Because even by the own tenant standards, things aren't being maintained.
Yeah, it's a great question, and, you know, I mean, that's something I'm going to have to defer to our property management group, and I know that they work hard to maintain the property, and, you know, I know that they, I think we just recently spent quite a bit of money replacing some, some dead trees, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, it's a big property.
I understand, but one guy said the tree's been dead for years.
I think he was referring to a different property. I think he was referring to the Tom Thumb property.
No, this was in the P&amp;Z meeting, yes, that they stated the tree's been dead.
Yeah, the, I think you're talking about, or maybe he was referring to the tree in the oval, that it wasn't dead, but it was dying.
Okay.
And I think that that, again, my apologies because I wasn't here, not an excuse, but just saying I wasn't here, but I believe that tree was transplanted from Florida, which was probably a mistake. So, you know, we're, we've worked closely with Kimley Horn, in fact, we had this discussion last week, pre-P&amp;Z of, okay, because of that, that issue with that tree, are we selecting native species, species that will thrive in this area and do well? Because we want the trees to do well, we don't want to be replacing them.
Kimley Horn has great landscape architects, and they're very into the Texas native, so I, it's just, like, they said we're on a third time around, and that doesn't look, what we have is concrete, but it was never supposed to be that. And then they bring up these maintenance issues, and then I have a question about, so the shops has a security agreement with our city, but apparently, and maybe the chief or the city manager can speak to this, we have, what type of police reports do we have of teenagers terrorizing these children?
That I don't know.
Does the chief step in? I like to give things like that.
I mean, and I'm not trying to make light of it, but, I mean, that's a pretty bold statement to say about our community. I didn't realize we had a problem, but apparently we do. And that's why I wanted to add, I mean, does any, I guess the chief did step out, I mean, that's, and you're saying that there's...
We have shop tenants who can speak to it.
I have a significant...
You need, if you're going to comment, you need to step forward.
Are there police reports?
Well, I didn't make the statement, I believe that came from one of our tenants.
Hi, everyone, my name is Akta Patel, I represent the ownership group, I am the current asset manager. So a couple of comments that were made, so one, just how can you kind of assure that these plans are going to go through and whatever happened in the past? I think the main point is that, you know, we're constantly trying to improve the center. Things don't always turn out perfectly, and that's also why that development team is not on this project. You know, we've been doing constant research, and our tenants are changing, and we're trying to upgrade our tenants, so we're trying to listen to them, and, you know, as you can see, a lot of people want this project, and I think when vendors don't work, we try to work with the management team, the property management team, to change that out. I think, you know, I'm fairly new to this asset, and I'm going to make it a point, Highland Village is very important to me. I work on other lifestyle centers as well, and this is something that I'm experienced with, so again, we'll, you know, we'll work with our property management team to make sure that, you know, any issues with kids, you know, landscaping's done, all of that, but again, that comes with running the property.
Okay, just to add to that, I know you listen to the tenants, and they, obviously their bottom line's important, but we just had a briefing about the Highland Village Business Association, and we were told that the citizens of Highland Village bury treasure outdoor nature beauty area, and they don't like losing, and this is coming from a report, I didn't even come up with this, outdoor space and ambiance with family areas, and they're afraid of losing the uniqueness of Highland Village. So you make, we had a grand entrance when this first was done, and then you make a change in 2015, and it's now just concrete, everybody says, now you want to make another change, taking away common area gathering space, and what mechanism makes you enforce this? Because your track record doesn't have, it's the same owner since 2015, so how do we, how do you give us the assurance that that's going to happen?
Is that a question about maintaining it and...
Yeah, I mean, because we apparently have a vandalism problem, you're wanting to put in soft furnishings, you're wanting to put in benches, you're wanting to put in umbrellas, that takes a lot of maintenance and upkeep, especially since we've got vandals. So what assurances, or would you add in the ordinance, some type of maintenance requirement or something to give us that the picture you're giving us is actually going to happen versus, this is the third time, and it's, it's feeling like Charlie Brown and the football's getting pulled out again? That's my question.
So, I can speak to that a little bit. So, you know, we're putting in a lot of money, we're putting in almost $3 million between kind of this project and the Cheesecake Factory, and that's, you know, we have a very supportive client who this property is very important to. Again, with those, with that investment comes a lot of upkeep, and we're definitely going to invest that money, right? We're not going to spend that money and just say, hey, it's just, like, it's the furniture and all that, that's not going to get replaced, like, we're definitely going to maintain that. You know, we're working with, every year we do a budgeting system, I mean, we're looking at our vendors, again, we're going to try our best to maintain it as well as possible. We definitely don't want to put in the money and have to come here again, two years down the road, to do this again.
Okay, because you put in $6 million in 2015. Yes.
Yeah, I remember that, I was on P&amp;Z then.
$6 million, so now you're, that's why I would feel comfortable, well, not, just a mechanism to force maintenance, because $6 million, and you still wouldn't take care of it. Same owners, same property owner, $6 million, so, and right now, your request is to take out 12 trees, but you're only planting nine back, and you're asking our city to give up this common gathering space that this entire thing was made around, but what exactly are you guys giving up? What are, what are your, your part? And you're saying, I have a couple questions, that this valet is going to be during peak hours, so people need to park closer so they can shop more, but you're going to introduce the valet traffic during peak times when people want to park closer to shop more?
It's very common practice to offer valet at the busiest times of the center, right? So that, I mean, we have, we've done parking studies that basically show that that's the time that the valet parking is needed.
I understand, but your, your argument is, we need more parking so people can park closer, but yet during the times when people want to shop, they don't get to park closer, or they're going to be jammed up with one drive aisle probably taken away.
Well, I would say that I don't think that we're going to lose a drive aisle. This was specifically set up, and again, just to be clear, the valet is not really the cornerstone of this plan, it's, we've made provisions for it.
It's a few hours a week.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a, if, if we have such a high demand for valet, that's a great thing for the center, and it's a great thing for the tenants.
I understand.
But if, but if it, but, but again, it's, it's not creating a designated area for it, it's, it's basically saying, during those, during those 10 hours a week or 11 hours a week, when we think it will be needed, seven spaces will be dedicated to processing and moving these valet cars out to the edge of the parking lot, right? So that, you know, we expect to have, if valet goes the way that we think it will, we are going to be providing a convenient solution for people to park at the expense of seven parking spaces during that 10-hour or 11-hour a week period.
Okay.
But again, I just want to be clear, it's not a, it's not a, this only works if we have valet, we haven't tested it yet, you know, so the, what we're trying to...
That does not bring me any comfort, saying we have not tested it yet, so...
No, meaning we haven't, we haven't tested it with a new Cheesecake Factory that brings in, you know, potentially a million new customers a year.
No, I get that, I was like, what is your traffic safety plan for, again, you're taking a non-vehicular area and turning into a parking lot with a street? So what is your traffic safety plan with signage, safety patrol, to reduce the number of incidents with children, most importantly, and vehicles, like what just happened in Southlake this month?
Well, I would say that we would, we would conduct business as usual, which is, this drive aisle with parking is not novel to the rest of the center, where we have maintained safety, right? And, you know, the signage would be our standard signage. I think we already talked about, you know, some of the, some of the landscape barriers that were, that were talking about along this edge, that, you know, provide some sort of physical barrier, but again, this isn't a new or novel concept within the center, this is really just expanding on what we have everywhere else. You know, we have this kind of parking scenario throughout the entire shopping center.
Agreed, but this part was special, it was miniitized specially, and that's where I'm, I'm a little hung up, is this, we had an entry feature, we had all this stuff, it was a miniitized, and there's a, I mean, did you ever look at just, what would happen if you landscaped it and made it back to green space, more like a park space? Or are you contractually obligated to do this?
Well, we looked at the need for parking in front of tenant spaces, and the value of that, not only for the Cheesecake Factory, but, you know, these tenants in the center, Lambos, who, you know, Jim just talked about that, these are the only two tenant spaces besides Ben and Jerry's that don't have head-in parking adjacent to them. It's convenient, it's the expectation in this style of lifestyle center.
And is this the, I have more, but I'll, I'll save for later, but one, two more. Is the, is the center not lit well now? Because there's a comment made that these lights are going to be, there's going to be more lighting, is it not lit well? I mean...
No, it's lit well, it's just, this is just better.
Okay, I'm just hung up on the teenage hooligans and stuff, but I have more questions.
Not our comment, you know, just to be clear, you know...
You know, I, real quick, I can speak to that, I've been, I've talked to police officers who've pulled shifts at the shopping center for years, and this has always been a problem, and it's a problem because parents aren't parents, they're buddies, and they think the shops is a playcare center, not a shopping center. So parents need to become parents again, and, and control their kids, and it happens, it's not just happening in this area, it's happening, I mean, there are kids that they climb up on the roof of Whole Foods and they jump off. So it's a longstanding problem.
Is there any chance that I might just say more to this? I feel like my issue is relevant.
If you want, you'd, we closed the public hearing, so I'm sorry.
I just thought...
Don't need ducks.
So anyway, Rhonda, do you think you had one more?
I'll just listen to her now, I might have more.
Okay, so Robert, you were next.
Yes, good evening, thank you for your time. I'll take a little bit different approach here, so I'll say that I appreciate the center trying this a third time, right? So first time was '24, '25, 2005, right? 2015 was a second attempt to improve the center. Here we are in 2023, a third time trying to improve the center. I would like to see more of our tenants, especially along the 407 corridor, iterate many, many times to improve their property as well for the sake of the city. Am I crazy about parking, taking away the open space? No, but there are trade-offs that we have to make, right? The tenants are on, all we've heard are tenants in favor of this, they've made an investment in Highland Village, they are keen on this idea. My only concern really on this plan as I see it, and it's more of a general question, not a specific question, is are we at all concerned Lambos having enough space in front of their patio to be able to comfortably see outdoor seating and not interfere with A, pedestrian traffic, or the people trying to eat there from being interacted with, with both cars? And, you know, obviously the headlights, I don't see any way to alleviate that on this plan, but all that's to say, was there any consideration of skewing this drive at all to open up the Lambo's side, if you will, and narrow down the Chico's side?
We did look at that, and it just doesn't line up with the Cherry Creek entrance, and being that we're, you know, it's now a four-way intersection, it, it didn't feel right to kind of offset that, it felt like it...
That's fair. Yeah. That's fair. And just my comment on the valet, this beautiful thing about traffic, everybody finds a way, right? So I think the valet parking will sort itself out in about a week. If you want to use the valet, you're going to use it, if you don't want to use it, you're going to park away and walk. to use it, you're going to park away and walk. And if you're hoping to find a spot in front of the store, good luck. I think they're going to be filled all the time. And then you're just going to be parking with everybody else out in the boonies. So it, nothing changes except it improves our tenants' abilities to run a business and increase their sales, which unfortunately, or fortunately, unfortunately, is a really big driver for our city. And I think it's important that we consider that we need to expand ways for our city to collect sales tax or revenue because our ability to fund our wonderful services is going to be stretched over time. So whatever we can do, within reason, within reason, to help them out and try things, I'm, I am for it. So that's it.
If I could just add one comment to that, because I think it's pertinent and, and I missed it in the original presentation. A tenant like the Cheesecake Factory, which does extensive research on where they locate, and they do it based on some minimum number of sales, number of visits, Cheesecake Factory will, is projecting, these are their projections, to do four times what Barnes &amp; Noble was doing in 26,000 square feet in, in, you know, 10,000 square feet. And that's a, that's a, about $800 and plus thousand dollars of additional sales tax revenue. Again, these are Cheesecake Factory's projections, but they are very fastidious when it comes to selecting sites and selecting real estate.
So you're saying Cheesecake Factory alone is going to contribute another $800,000 in sales tax revenue, according to their projections?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, the shops as a whole, this last year, generated $600,000 in sales tax revenue. Is that right?
That'd be like that.
Is that, Ken, where, is that, am I remembering that right?
That sounds low.
Okay.
It's going up. It's just going up.
Okay.
Oh, so 25% of the-
Well, that might be, there are 10,000, might be everything with L I S D and everything. So that might not be the city's.
Okay, so-
What's on the sales tax revenue?
That's sales tax.
Yeah. So that's their total sales tax revenue.
Okay. John?
I just, a few comments. First, congratulations on resigning AMC Theater. I think that's been a thorn in everyone's side for the last five years. And I think they'll start investing back into the theater, which is often bring more traffic, is bring more eaters, more diners, more people getting ready to go to shows. So congratulations on that. I take a different approach. I love the new view. You know, the survey that we just saw, just talked about bringing vitality to the city. Okay, you go to the legacy over in Plano, it's pretty exciting when you go down through the main street. There's head-in parking on both sides. It's walking people going up and down both sides, the lights across the top. It's going to be an exciting area. I like that. Okay. I drove by there today. I wanted to go just take another look at it, you know, and the bollards are out there for the street that's there. It's all concrete. Okay? The only time it's filled up is when our Village Glow's, and that's when it's filled up. Okay? And you'll be moving Village Glow's to the other side, so appreciate that. So I take the tenant, the tack that, you know, the tenants, the landlord knows best how to make your investments, to take care of our citizens, the customers, and those from surrounding cities that are coming in to spend money in our city, which they like. You're not going to make the investments and then throw that money away. And I think anyone thinks, you know, that has not run a business. Okay? You're not going to make an investment and not get a really good return on it. I like seeing business owners here tonight, okay? Business people that have been in our city for many, many years who have contributed to the city, especially down to Doubletree Ranch Park, Jim, thank you very much. People giving back to the city, so you know best. No tenant or owner is against this, which says a lot for the We've already taken care of Village Glow. That's going to be moved to the north side. I like that. I understand investment, you alluded to it, which will be remodeling the north side. Okay? I only had one question. I always loved cutting through Barnes &amp; Nobles to get from the north to the south. That was our shortcut. So, you know, maybe put a tunnel through wherever you, it takes that 16,000 square feet. So all in all, I mean, I think the shops are coming around. I mean, it's the number one shopping center in Denton County. It's only getting better. With what we're getting, we're going to be bringing in people that are building on the west of us. Okay? I mean, there's some serious, serious dollars coming into the west of us and drive by every day. And they're going to stop in our shops, okay? And they're going to spend money with us. Okay? I don't think that we will have anything that we can't be proud of with this. And then the last but not least, I know the, talk about the police officers, okay? The shops have been funding two of our police officers for chief, what, 14 years?
No.
For, for a long period of time. So, I mean, we've got a substation.
Eight years ago, we gave them a board with a contract for us for roughly, sorry, around $216,000. We put in 300. Can I step up and just sort of give that answer?
Yeah.
So I started almost nine years ago. Ravi was in place already and his concept and wasn't too tough to convince me to keep the shops or make the shops one of the safest shopping centers in, in Texas. And that goal over, over that timeframe created a contract that's been renewed every year since then. It started at about $215,000, I believe. And at that timeframe, by the way, eight years ago, Kevin Laughlin actually was part of that contractor, attorney now, our sales tax percentage for the shops was about 28% of the city's revenue. So with that being said, we put 320 hours a month of police presence on their property. So, and I, I'm going to actually ask Ravi, I didn't, and then this is probably not the spot to do it, but I'm going to ask. I'd love to have a police parking spot for one of those 23 or 26 spots, only because it's a center area of, of, of our operations. We have a substation out there that they provide to us at no cost. It, it's just a huge relationship. I know earlier, and I think I was asked as I was coming back about, you know, nuisance or, or whatnot, that area for us. That area is truthfully, just as Jim Vurfer said, it was, it's a nuisance area for, for kids who don't belong there and doing things they shouldn't have been doing. The other side with the fountains and the water, parents watch their kids over there because it's a little more, they can't be negligible, as negligible there. So it, and David Harney was here to give you all those statistics. I have to rearrange schedules in the summertime to put both my SROs specifically on property out at the shops to control some of those nuisance areas. So I actually, David showed up tonight after Briar Hill meeting. I asked him why he was here, because it's unusual. He says, I wanted to hear this, because it affects police presence and what we do out there, this parking, this, this changing, that, the dynamics out there. So I hope I answered quite a bit of your, your questions and-
I just was, I mean, it's, it's a good partnership with the city, okay? And I, I understand the, the questions from my, you know, peers up there on the council. The shops are evolving, okay? The shops are bringing in better, better tenants, you know, that, that's what our city asks for. They, we've got a very loyal customer base within our city. The more that you thrive, the more that the shops are going to thrive. Okay? So that's all I can say is, you know, we live in a city that we're blessed with a lot of benefits. And I think what you're proposing here is only going to help us, okay? I can see, and we can always look at the what-ifs. There's going to be a what-if, you know, the ball that runs into the street, okay? The people that are right now using out front are waiting to get into Lambos. They're sitting there waiting to get in. I don't see any other people through there other than on Village Glow's. And we've taken care of our Village Glow's. Okay? I love the greenery going down the side. So, you know, as you can tell, I'm not going to vote for you, but no. Congratulations again on moving it, getting the occupancy up and getting AMC back. That's going to do nothing but help our city. So thank you.
Before I go back to Brian, Kevin, Sean, do y'all have anything at all? Because you didn't turn your lights on.
Oh.
I just have a quick follow-up question is all.
Okay, go ahead.
If you don't mind. What, what was the deciding factor for valet at the south side rather than the north side of Cheesecake Factory?
On the, on the south side of the drive aisle or?
The building. Is it, my understanding is valet will be on the east-west corridor, not the north-south.
Correct, correct.
Because there's an inner, that would create an intersection in front of the Cheesecake Factory where it would create more traffic. Why was this chosen for the valet spot rather than the north side of the building?
You know, I think as Vince mentioned, we ran this by a traffic consultant, SP+ based in Dallas, and they gave us some feedback on, on where to locate this, quite honestly.
If I, you don't mind, be directed to the leasing individual back here for a quick question.
Vince?
The, the configuration of the 16 versus the 10 has been in, in the building. You mentioned that that 16 creates an L.
Correct.
Does the L create a new opening, exterior opening to the north side?
It does.
Or does it take in the existing opening now?
Well, the 10,000 square feet, if you, if you-
Once you demise it down.
You demise that, you can take it all the way across the north side for 125 square feet. I mean, excuse me, 125 feet, creating one entrance on the north side and two on the south side. The reason why the valet is there is because that's Cheesecake Factory and the other tenant's entrance.
The front door.
There's two doors on the, on the south side versus the one-
Two doors on the south side and only one on the front.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Kevin?
Make sure that's on. There we go. You said the shops can close down this area from seven to eight times a year for three days, four days?
That's correct.
Or is that just standard? Is that through y'all? Is that an agreement between you and the city? How does, how do those days, how do those days work out? I know we have our specific events that we do. Is that just based off Highland Village specific events?
It's actually the ability to do events. So I think that for the Highland Village Art Festival, that would be one of those dates. But, you know, and again, this is, this is Ravi and his marketing team. You know, do we decide to do a farmer's market, you know, one weekend? Or that's really just giving us flexibility to say, hey, eight times a year, we can do some different events here. Maybe it's a, you know, a music event. I mean, there, there could be-
Marketing's not my specialty.
Sure.
Sorry.
The other question is, safety, public gatherings, the things that we do. We obviously put up barricades whenever we're having these events. Because we are tearing up this amount of concrete in this area, specifically for where we hold events, has there been any thought to putting retractable electric bollards in at each entry point that, to make it safer whenever those events do happen? Obviously, the topping of the bollards can always be adapted to match the stamped concrete or the colored concrete. But was that ever mentioned in this? Because I think that would be a fantastic safety feature to add that would also give you the opportunity to block this area off to where, hey, we know, at least for that piece, we're a little bit safer.
Well, the really good news is that we have a lot of bollards that we can salvage from the existing project. Electronic retractable, that's, that's a lot. But we have done it in the past where we, we create sleeves in the ground where you can drop those bollards in and secure them. So yeah, that's something that I certainly think we'd be open to. And again, we had even, in talking to the contractors, we were kind of planning, you know, construction of this, we did say, let's salvage as many of these bollards as we can because there are places that we could likely use them in the property. But yes, I, I think that's a, a, a very, you know, kind of smart idea.
Going through it, and this is just a, a general question. I'm not an engineer and won't, probably won't ever be. But when you looked at the 20 spots and you, it's a partnership between the city, the community, the shops, and it's a great partnership that we have. When I did the scale at home based off our drawings, to me, you could add, and I have an idea what this answer is going to be, you could put an additional nine spots on the north side of that parking and redo everything in the middle, keeping it common space. Why not just half it? What's the difference between 11 cars? You know, the difference between 20 coming down to nine, right? So why not just, hey, common area, we'll invest in that area. We know how much people love it. We're also giving you a little bit of extra parking there. We're enhancing the area. Why not just do that?
We looked at that and, you know, the other piece of this is just the access, right? Is getting the, the ability to be able to park in front of Lambos. Now, I, I know, I know you're talking about this area to the north. And, you know, honestly, every parking space in the interior of the center counts. And there's some metric, I don't know what it is, but, you know, every parking space equals dollars in sales.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah. I don't have that metric. And if I gave it to you, it, you know, how do you weight the interior space? So if you take the, the gross sales of the center, how do you weight those interior spaces versus the exterior? It, it would be, it would be art and not math. But there is some premium to having those, those spaces at your front door. And, and look, this isn't to say that these other, other tenants are going anywhere, but, you know, we may be in a position in the next five or so years where, let's say, Chico's and Somme will want to downsize or they, you know, because all these retailers' footprints are getting smaller and we have an opportunity to maybe add another restaurant here, you know, that's, that, that faces this drive aisle. We have to be thinking, and, and we do, as a group, we, we try to think forward, okay, what, what could the re-tenanting look like in the future? We've seen a lot of brands that we thought were indestructible, you know, go, go out of business or downsize or contract. And so we have opportunities to create, you know, maybe some, some more restaurants here. Maybe this could, you know, eventually be some sort of restaurant row. But I think that the, that access that, that kind of pulls you deeper into the center, gives you more of a decision point as you enter, is really valuable. And, and those, you know, 11 spaces are, because it's actually, the 20 spaces in the middle, but, you know, we're, we're adding those six across the top. So it's, it's, you know, really maybe you're picking up, I'll take your word for it, that pick it up nine. But I think those 20 spaces, we think those 20 spaces are very valuable.
All right. And last thing, it's, it's not, it's just a personal. I'm not a huge fan of the design of the arch. I think it's a great idea to have an arch there. To me, it doesn't say, when I, when I pull in someplace, I want to say, hey, welcome to Highland Village. I wanted to grab you and pull you into it. And I know that's, that's probably a different field, but to me, that doesn't do it. I still like the arch that it's there. I, I love the fact that you see it when you come in, but just something a little bit more dynamic.
Well, and that's noted. We haven't, that's kind of an artist's rendition of what that archway sign could look like. We haven't, you know, landed on that design. So it's, it's good feedback.
Great.
I think we need to explore some, some options on that.
All right. Going or adding on to the last discussion that we just had here, because I like, I like where that one was going. So basically, retail's shrinking, we all know that. I see this as becoming more of an entertainment area, right? A destination. And you brought up a good point, you know, let's say that Somme and Chico's weren't there and this becomes more of a restaurant row type of area. In my mind, it would be good to have this open space, this lush open space without the parking so that people can come out of these restaurants and enjoy their food in a larger area outside, especially if you increase the number of restaurants that are going to be there. That's my thought on it. Couple of questions. Let's see. With regards to the umbrellas and the soft seating, are they going to be permanent? Are they going to be attached or?
Yes, the umbrellas will be fixed.
Okay, what about the soft furniture?
No, it, it's best if that stuff is, you can move it around.
They'll be putting it up at night. I mean, is there any thoughts of vandalism or stealing it? Because I mean, it looks nice.
Yeah, yeah. Typically, what we've done in other centers is you bring the cushions in and then run the bicycle cable, you know, the, the long cable through it and around the, the umbrella. Because the umbrella is permanently fixed and it's actually set in the concrete.
Okay. What is the expected traffic flow through this area, especially if people are going to have a straight shot coming off of 407?
It's a great question. Typically, what a traffic engine here would do would take the, a number of cars, and it used to be divided by two, now they would be divided by three. I don't have the exact traffic counts at this entrance, so I can't answer that with confidence.
Was, was any study done? I know that it was mentioned, I think Vince O'Toole mentioned a valet traffic study. It'd be great to see that. But is, was there any study done with regards to the traffic through this area?
There was not.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's see. With regards to the value, value's an interest- With regards to the value, value's an interesting term. How is it defined? So one way that we heard it was Cheesecake Factory was going to bring about 800,000 in additional sales tax. Obviously, we see a very small portion of that here in Highland Village. With regards to the increased parking, 20 spots, has there been any calculations to the increased traffic or value from a revenue perspective for those establishments that are going to be adjacent to the parking with the exception of Cheesecake Factory?
So this is an imprecise science, right? But Cheesecake Factory has a halo effect when they come into a shopping center. And the reason for that is, a Cheesecake Factory wait, whether it's your cup of tea or not, Cheesecake Factory wait is many times in excess of an hour. And I know my family and I, I wouldn't wait an hour. So I'd look around and see what my other options are. So there is this kind of halo effect. The old adage of the rising tide lifts all boats. So instead of waiting an hour, you look at Lambos, Sip 'n Savor, Grimaldi's and say, all right, it looks like a 35-minute wait, let's, why don't we go there? And, you know, and so you get more exposure. So there is a value proposition. It's hard to quantify. Is it a 5% sales increase, 10%? It varies from property to property, but we do see a lift in sales as a result of somebody like the Cheesecake Factory.
So would you and your family be willing to wait an hour if you had a nice area, lush area to wait in?
No. I mean, that's just me. I'm being honest. But, you know, I think, you know, and if I could go back to your earlier comment, I mean, I do think that we are creating a space where you can, you know, sit comfortably and these are very generous and wide areas. To your comment earlier about, and again, I'm not spreading, we're not spreading rumors here, but let's look ahead, let's look in the crystal ball, look ahead in the future. You know, this, from the face of this building to the edge of this landscape here is over 20 feet. That is a substantial area to maintain an eight-foot sidewalk and an outdoor patio. Plus, you have, you know, these kind of interior spaces. You know, there's, in fact, we were just talking about the, what's the indoor seating count and the outdoor seating count for Cheesecake Factory? The patios are nice, but they comprise a fairly small fraction of the total seating. So it's probably 25%?
Yeah. It's 164 of the interior.
So out of 200 spaces, or I'm sorry, 200 seats, there's 50 on the patio.
Can you show me where that patio is going to be for Cheesecake Factory in relation to the valet and new parking?
It sits here.
So it's going to be in front of White House or down...
Yeah, it's down, yeah, it's going to be down on the, so it's on the, it would be on the far right side of the former Barnes &amp; Noble space.
Okay. I think you have a better shot on a concept drawing, a few slides down to where they actually put the outdoor seating out there.
The rendering.
Yeah, it's, so this is the entrance, and then it's over here. Are you talking about the rendering?
The rendering.
Yep, okay.
Just a little bit to the right, I think.
Here we go. So you can see the patio here.
Okay, so on that rendering, would the valet be, I guess, where the gentleman is standing right there?
Right about here. Yeah, right about here.
But there was a valet traffic study, was there also a study done? Because I live behind the shops right in. We were there before the shops were built, loved them when they were built, loved. The water features, the obelisk, you know, when it was first built in, what, 2006, I believe? We've gone through the changes. With regards to the design aspects here and getting to the valet, how long is it going to take for somebody? Because I know how far those parking lots are because we park there all the time, right? We never find a place to park in front of a store. That's always a given. That back lot over there across by Chen Chapel, how long is it going to take somebody to go over there and get a car and bring it back? Especially during peak time.
Yeah. Well, typically, they'll have, you know, two guys running it, and those guys literally are sprinting out there.
It's at least a quarter mile.
Let's see.
Cheesecake Factory obligates their valets within two minutes.
Okay.
It's easily accessible. They'll have under three to four guys, more than radio. It is nothing.
Yeah, I could do some quick math on here, but...
No, that's fine.
You know, added up spaces.
I was just curious, because, I mean, if it takes them a while to get cars, because you have to realize, they're bringing it back through where Sip 'n Savor is, they're going to have valet there, right? Are they still going to have the valet if they do valet in front of Cheesecake Factory?
No, I think the intent is that this would be kind of a communal valet.
Is that right? Because Sip 'n Savor doesn't have dedicated valet lanes, which at that point, now you've got one lane blocked with Sip 'n Savor valet, and we're going to be having other valets trying to...
I think what you're saying is Sip 'n Savor is going to give up their valet.
Yeah, so the intent is that this would be...
Yeah, that's what I'm double checking, because I'm saying it's, the times to get a vehicle is going to become exponentially longer as, if certain things aren't taken care of. Okay. With regards to the parking spots, did I hear during P&amp;Z that there are going to be car stops in those parking spots?
Yes, curb stops. That's correct. Yes. Yeah, and that's, and we have that throughout the interior parking, those curb stops.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Your turn. Anybody, Rhonda, did you have any follow-ups?
I just have one question. It sounds like there's a lot of, well, we're going to, we've talked about this and we're going to do this. So does the site plan come before us? Because that, to make sure, again, there are time, maybe it's a charm, that this stuff really happens, do we get a, does a site plan come for this that really spells out where everything's going?
That's what you're considering tonight.
Oh, I thought it was just the zoning.
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Not regulations. Oh, I didn't see a site plan. It just says the approved amendments to development regulations. I didn't know it was changing the process.
I'll defer to Kevin. She says changing the process. You got any comments?
Well, it says that we're considering the zoning ordinance change and amendments. Does that also consider approving the site plan? It just, there's a lot of stuff that's been talked about, and so how do we know it'll happen?
Well, I mean, site plan process is going to follow whatever the ordinance would say, and I think typically, most site plan process is administrative as long as it's consistent with the drawings on the, with the ordinance itself. So...
Okay. I was just, I mean, there's just some stuff they said they were going to change or enhance to help Lambos parking and all that stuff.
Okay.
Just want to make sure they get incorporated into the, whatever we do tonight is what you're getting at.
That's what, yeah. What I'm getting at is, again, the only thing we have are paper trails, and so how do we, how do we affirm that's really going to happen, what we've talked about, because there's been some evolution in this, versus what we've started with? That's, yes, that's exactly what's...
I think one thing that would help, if that's what you're looking for, and I think we want to make sure the site plan that's ultimately approved contains those items, then probably what we need to do is have, you know, have an understanding what those items are, and then if, you know, should the, you know, with the motion regarding the ordinance tonight, include those, make sure we're incorporating those between first and second reading within the ordinance, if that's what you're, if that's the kind of thing you're looking for.
Yes, I'm looking for, I mean, again, these are great drawings, but having assurances like X number this, this here would, yes, incorporate. Just to, the better the paper trail, the more accountable people tend to be.
I think we just need to, you know, somebody will just need to articulate what those are so we know what we would add to the ordinance, if that's what we need to do. And of course, we need to have that conversation with the applicant too and see if that's something that's amenable to the applicant, but, or if it's a deal killer. We just need to kind of know what those are.
Oh, I mean, I thought it was the landscaping around Lambos for the lights and some more trees and stuff like that. I mean...
Those were my concerns, yes.
Right. I mean, just, we, it talked, it looks like this is a good starting point, but there was some enhancements that people were talking and agreeing with, so I just, how do we know that's going to happen?
The three or four that I heard were the landscaping on both sides of the drive aisle, the bollards for inclusion on either's end, and then you had some concerns.
So I think what Kevin's saying is, when we get to a point where somebody makes a motion to approve, if you want to make sure that those things are included, then they need to be included in the motion.
Correct. But I was summarizing what I thought were those amendments.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
So let's make sure you get, you know, those get included if you really want to make sure that that gets...
Right.
And I think, and again, you know, I'm all for objective ordinances, so, you know, so everybody knows 10 years from now what we've all approved, because I don't want anything, you know, I need to know with some level of detail what we're talking about, as would the applicant, you know, for that purpose to know what they're going to have to comply with. So, you know, I can, I can do my, you know...
Super magic?
Yeah, I can do my, I can do my drafting, I can do my creative writing, but, you know, again, my creative writing is dependent on, you know, direction on what that needs to be with some level of detail and not too open-ended.
Well, I like the bollards, you know, to close it down. That's an easy safety feature. Some landscaping issues and more of the light, I don't know how you put it, I don't know if it's called light protection, but like, what's it called? Light screening? I don't know. I'm not a landscape architect.
Well, I think what he had talked about was a landscape feature that buffers the lights from the vehicles...
Yes.
Going to the restaurant to shield the people. At what height would that achieve that goal? Is it a two-foot height? Is it a four-foot height?
Well, if you've got five Ford F-250s parked there, it's going to be...
And then if you do that, then you're blocking the view.
Right.
I think we need, I think it's got to be something that's, you know, that's reasonable. You know, I believe, and I'll have to defer to...
6-inch is standard for parking lot screening.
36?
Yeah, and I will say, most ordinances I drafted, it's usually...
36 seems really tall.
Usually a 36-inch, usually three-foot tall landscape or a combination landscape, which might be originally planted at something, I mean, it could be planted at 30, you know, three-foot at the beginning of the, yeah, it's, that's still pretty, pretty tall, but typically, I mean, I know most, I know most ordinances, when we're doing parking lot screening, whether it be, and then a lot of times, it's parking lot screening from a parking lot that's adjacent to a street. There's a lot of times, a lot of the orders, it's usually a three-foot.
I would say something that, honestly, what I think would be reasonable is, first of all, you've got a six-inch curb, right? So your vehicle's down six inches, and then add 18 inches to that, gives you 24, which I think should be substantial enough to block that. 36 seems awfully tall and creates something of a, feels like it creates something of a tunnel.
No, that's really tall. I was going to say 24-inch bushes. 36 inches is, that's like a little person, like, you know, my niece and nephew.
Right.
Now, just, again, I really want you to prove, I'm just, you can tell I'm a little skeptical. I want this to succeed, but I live in papers and contracts, and if it's written down, so are you amenable to putting that in for, what did you call it? Parking lot buffering? Parking lot?
Screening.
Screening, that's it. Parking lot screening and the security bollards.
Yeah, yeah.
And then personally, I would like on the east side of this to have a minimum of two additional trees planted, if not three.
We can find, we can find place, a place for two trees, for two additional trees.
My biggest concern are the two, the way I'm looking at it, fairly triangular segments in the widest space between the trees and the parking area. That's the, to me, that's the largest open area that I think could use some additional screening or shading.
Okay.
Good.
I have a comment to that.
Sure, go ahead.
If I can, I, Brian, not to disagree, but to disagree with you...
Yeah, you're a landscape key. You just got to his territory.
The trees that you would propose in that turf area along the east side, right? My concern is, once we start adding shade trees, right? The key to that area is the turf and the shrubs, right? So if you add the trees, now you're going to affect the ability, let's say, of the grass, the sod, to be a nice dense grass mat, right? That we want people to interact with. So my only concern, and you guys can figure it out, is if we do add shade trees in those areas, are we then creating a maintenance...
Issue.
Problem or issue with grass being able to adequately grow there, so it's not a dirt pit? And then it doesn't end up becoming decomposed granite or something when they can't get grass established?
Right.
Because there are going to be people going back and forth, right?
Yeah, for sure.
So the best we could do to maintain the grass, quality of grass in that area, since it is grass up and down both sides, I would be, that would be my consideration with not having the plantings there, but to that point, I would also say that they may be, the shade trees, the taller shade trees may block the views into the stores, which are usually the, right? They want visibility.
Signage, you mean?
The signage of the stores, visibility of the stores, right? Perhaps ornamentals there could work better than a giant shade tree. You can get a decent-sized ornamental that provides some shade reasonably, kind of thing. So I think there's a balance here that can be struck. I don't want a giant live oak that you, you know...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Giant mess. So I'll shut up, but that was, that's my response to that. Other than that, I guess, security bollards, just to be clear, we're not, we're not proposing explosive pop-up bollards in this building, right?
Fortunately, that is outside the budget, but as we said before, we have...
Sleeves.
An ample amount of bollards, yes, sleeves with a cap and you can drop the bollard. You could reuse.
And just, and just for my benefit of drafting this thing, what I understand on the bollards, we're talking about use of, of the bollards for temporary use, equipped with sleeves in the streets, for closing off that central parking area during special events.
Right. As opposed to a temporary fence or K-rail or something like that?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's better, and if we're right on it, oh, it's just on this side, but also because my village glows as it goes to the other side too, maybe a good idea to install on both those entry points going to the AMC as well, assuming that that street will be shut off the same way that this one was shut off whenever that event moves over there. So just something to look forward to.
Will we address that in the north courtyard?
Yeah. When we do that, when we do that.
Look clean and neat, though. That makes it look clean and neat and purposeful and not those concert style.
Barriers.
Yes, it makes it clean.
Some of my friends is trees. I'm now understanding we want at least additional ornamentals.
At least two, we could go ornamentals, yeah.
I need to, I would, it would help if I know, help clarify where.
Do you want me to draw dots on there?
It wouldn't hurt, at least a general area.
Get a black marker.
I mean, because I...
I'll let Brian decide. Can you just say two additional trees?
I can say two additional trees if you're not particularly bothered as to where, as long as it's within this area.
I think the intent is...
I think the applicant knows what we're talking about.
Because we're not landscape architects.
Yeah, is that something we, yeah, right. We consult with our engineer and then consult with staff.
Again, I was kind of, again, also, you know, trying to address Councilmember Hurst's concern about making sure something is enforceable. That's, and the level enforcement, that's all I'm, I just need some clarification, make sure I know I'm drafting it to the level that you want it.
So my desire was to have it on the east side of the drive...
Okay.
In the two grassy areas, I believe that's grassy areas, the two, or shrubs, small triangles.
So you're talking vicinity of the white and blue car in the drawing?
Right there, right there.
Okay.
Could I ask this, as perhaps a, something of a compromise? Could we, to Councilman Feaster's comment, you know, could we move, swap the umbrella and perhaps an ornamental is more towards this area? I mean... is, is more towards this area? I mean, if we, if we say, yeah, we'll add two ornamentals on, ornamental trees on the, on the east side, and, I mean, wouldn't that be a condition of, of a building permit typically?
I'm okay with, yeah.
Okay.
Moving, moving the seating area.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if we just shuffle some things around and.
Again, I can start filling in this open area a little bit more with some type of.
Right.
Soft prettiness.
Something to enhance the, beautify it, if you will.
Understood, yeah, understood. So what I'm hearing is bollards, removable bollards at either entrance of the drive. Two ornamental trees on the east side will kind of, will defer to our, our good landscape architects to kind of help us locate that, but we understand the, the comment there. And then some sort of landscape kind of barrier or.
Screening.
Yeah, screening, yeah.
Which would, could serve dual purposes, a low, harder to dart out.
Yeah.
Cuddlers can't jump 24 inches, promise you that.
Our, is 24, okay, that's.
It looks like your landscape plan, you've got, you're doing abilias and dwarf berford holly, so either one of those, I think it's calling for the abilias to be 24 inches. So, yeah, those should be good.
Okay.
Yep, good. Sean?
A quick question. I noticed there's a lot of stamped concrete. Is that going to be stained or somehow colorized, or is it just going to be?
Matching the existing.
Matching the existing, okay.
Thank you, Kendall. She knows the details.
So now it's my turn. I only had really two questions, and then I had a comment. First question, talking about the valet spaces on the far west side.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the approval of this at all. It's just, I'm curious. Remind me again, the time, it's 5:00 to 10:30 on Friday and Saturday. So what happens if somebody drives up at 4:50 and parks in one of those designated valet parking spots, and they're there for four hours? Or how are?
Then the, then the.
That spot, just not on the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it depends on when the valet company comes out to set up, you know, they typically.
Because, yeah, yeah, they typically, they block them off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, you know what, the same goes for, you know, frankly, these, you know, seven spaces. If somebody decides to park there, then we kind of pivot.
Okay.
You know, and, and we have to be.
Flexible.
You know, flexible. But the, you know, the idea is to try to get signage out there as soon as possible and, you know, reserve those spaces.
Second question, a little bit more, a little bit tougher question. So it's two parts. First part is, how long is this construction going to take? And the second part is, all the tenants, Jim, Chico's, Soma, Tiff's Treats, was there anybody from Tiff's Treats here? Are they prepared for the disruption in, in business that this, that the construction's going to cause?
Yeah, so first part of the question, we anticipate this to take nine, let's see, I think it's 120 days. The bulk of it will be done.
Are those, are those 120 private sector days, or those 120 techs dot days?
Don't go there.
These will be private sector. Look, we're, you know, we're, we are incentivized to get this done before the holiday, to get all the major concrete work done before the holiday. That's an imperative. That's the directive that we've been given as the, you know, we're going to be overseeing the construction. That's imperative, that that be done as quickly and as painlessly as possible, and then the landscape would follow after that.
Okay. And then the only other comment I had was, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about third time around, third time around, third time around. I was, I was on planning and zoning for the second time around, and I learned then, and it's, it's reemphasized as a result of the pandemic. Shopping centers have to evolve. They have to change with the market. That's what the shops has always tried to be proactive in doing. So I, I see this as a, as a necessary thing to get to the next iteration of whatever retail is going to be for the next, however long it's going to be. So I, you know, we, when the apartment issue came up, we heard about how one of the reasons we can't build apartments is because they'll take away parking, because there's not enough parking. And now we've heard objections to this, because there's, there is enough parking. So, you know, I, I think this is a good project. I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be good for, and I think it's notable, I think it's important to remember, Tiff's Treats and Lambos are the only two businesses in the entire shopping center that don't have parking directly in front of their businesses. So, and, oh, and Ben &amp; Jerry's, I'm sorry, Ben &amp; Jerry's. I think it's important, and I think, I think we're doing them a disservice by not giving them that, that amenity. So with that, last call, is there anything, anybody else?
I forgot to add one thing. I know, I'm just that person. Can we add something that enforces maintenance this time? Or is that, that they make, you keep it maintained? The amenities in working condition in this area? And if the trees die, you put them back and stuff like that?
My only hesi, we, we are committed to that. My only hesitation is that a very subjective, who's standard? That's the only thing that I'm, that I'm worried about, is if the tree, if the tree dies, you know, does it got to be replaced? It just feels subjective.
It's more the furnishings, actually, because those umbrellas can take a few gusts, and you'll replace them a few times. And the soft furnish, it's more the, what is it called? Street furniture and keeping them maintained? Because going from hard to soft, that's a whole nother level of maintenance.
Yes. And, and just to be clear, we've done it on quite a few projects and have, and have done very well with it. And part of it is, you know, Ravi and his team's job, you know, pull those in at night, make sure that they're cleaned. We, you know, we're getting good fabrics that, so, you know, all, all I can say, and again, I know, I'm, I'm trying to convince you that, you know, that, that Ravi and his team will take care of it, but it's a big investment and, and.
Oh, it's a big investment, and solely, I'm, I'm skeptical, I'm not going to lie, because I just, I just would like a commitment that this, this time, it'll, you'll keep the standards up, and you'll keep the maintenance up, and, and not let it just, I get reinventing, but it's like you let it run down and then reinvent, and maybe to keep it until you want to reinvent.
Councilmember Hurst, my name is Ravi. I've been the property manager at the shops at Highland Village since 2014. I'm not a Highland Village resident, but I might as well be. My wife will be the first person to tell you that I spend more time here than I do at home. Maintenance, operations is, is everything I do. We have never really let the place go down. It's, it's, we maintain the property as best as we can. There are certain things, like when kids leap, jump over the, the bollards, the ones that have lights, and they break the lights. We started off with eight of those. We have only two left. It is, is just something, when, the hailstorms, the hailstorms, we've just spent $38,000 replacing trees. So maintenance is something, yes, we have had vandalism, kids, mischievous kids, but we have always tried to be on top of it. And there is, I can assure you that we, we're, working with AAW, I've, I've been in this industry for 20 years. I have never had an asset managers like AAW, very supportive, always giving me everything I can. I can assure you that maintenance will not be a problem. And like the mayor said, we have just changed with, with times when we need to. The tree needed to come down. That tree was brought down, brought in from Florida. We had all good intentions, but it never really formed its roots. And so it needed to, to go away. But as far as maintenance is concerned, we, we, we have a very strong maintenance team. I just want to say that.
Thank you. I'm just going off of what the tenants said at the last PNC meeting this fall, and the pictures before, but, I mean, I guess we'll just use that as our maintenance. But I really hope you guys make it stick, or at least when you want to change, keep it pretty till you change it again.
Absolutely.
Okay. So with that, your light's still on. Do you, okay. Mr. Kixmiller?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2023 days 1306 approving amendments to the plan development regulations applicable to Lot 1, Block A, the shops at Highland Village. Said property being located in the market plan development, retail, MPRD or DR, zoning district by amending the concept plan, illustrated plan, signage criteria, and other regulations to accommodate the construction of additional parking, drive, landscaping, and signs, first of two reads, with the addition of removable bollards at the entrance and both entrances to the plaza area, okay? And they'd be the same bollards, but you can stipulate bollards. Screening for, in front of Lambo's Restaurant, four light screening per Councilman Hurst. And then two additional trees to be placed by the landscape on, you want the east side?
East side.
On the east side.
Ornamentals.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Ornamental trees.
Ornamentals. Ornamentals.
Ornamentals, yeah. Two ornamental trees.
Before anybody seconds that motion, on the parking, you specified Lambos, but I don't think, I think the, I think the general idea, correct me if I'm wrong, was a two-foot, two-foot landscape screening in front of parking areas with, within the drive area.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think it was limited just to Lambos, was it?
I think, I think you're right. I think you're right.
Yeah.
Just shielding lights going into the restaurant.
I just need to know if that's a problem.
Right now, there's only one restaurant that would be impacted.
I would say in front of Lambos, until you get to the stage, basically, on the west side.
Okay.
Would have been my interpretation of that, but.
That's what, yeah, that's where the, I mean, that's the people that are going to, shoppers aren't going to notice, but.
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to, I just want to be clear on what, how this gets drafted, so.
Northwest, five spots.
That's fine.
Five spots.
Yeah.
Okay, we're clear?
Angie, you got that? Okay. Mr. Kixmiller with a motion and amendments. Mr. Feaster?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I said aye.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yes, aye.
All right, motion carries.
Six one.
I want them to prove me wrong. No, like a challenge, Dan.
With that, we move on to late work session, status reports, and current projects and discussions on future agenda items. And I think we also had something of a presentation to finish from earlier. And everybody that stayed, thank you for your patience and for what was a good, healthy conversation.
There is a it or die, so I think there's a, a new addition of, of future council agendas. Of course, we're getting to the point where we will be considering boards and commission appointments, and then we will have the nonprofits. So we're getting kind of squeezed with time on having early work sessions. So Angie has worked up a calendar of items that are coming up. We have had some requests, of course, for some, some work sessions. At present, it looks like the only gap we would have for a work session would be October 10th, coming up soon. And then we would have to look at the, the calendar after that as we get into November, December. November, December, we just try to do a meeting each month. On that second page of that, if you go down to the bottom, there are some of those work session items. And if there's any prioritization of council for, for looking at trying to do one of those in October, we can do that. We would also have the option of moving up the nonprofits, which would free up a November date for a work session. Nothing that has to be decided tonight, but in looking at those, if there is a particular item of interest, we could certainly plug that in for one of those work sessions.
I have two questions. I now know if this is a future. Are we talking about future agenda items?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I know we're in budget season, and so maybe this is too late, but September 1st, this Texas state law requires armed police at all schools during school day. And I didn't know if that had any, yeah, I'm late to the game figuring out what laws come up on the first, but I didn't know if that's going to affect anything with us or our budget or anything. Since we only have two officers and we have four schools that have to have marshals or police there full-time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So I don't even know if that's a future agenda.
Good question. I didn't hear all of it, but I'm assuming it was related to the marshals on the.
Yeah.
And our responsibility, it's, it won't be our responsibility.
Okay, I didn't know.
LISD, since they're the controlling entity for that, they have to find the solution to that.
Have they asked us to help them yet?
Hmm. Well, you know, five years ago, I asked for an SRO on every campus.
They've got a different plan. So, I mean, again, police officers are expensive, so.
Yeah, they only get $15,000 a school. That don't, that doesn't pay much.
Yeah, there was a shock to the, I mean, I can't speak for them, but for us who are monitoring it on the side, it was a shock. It was, it was thrown in there, and, and people expected to make it happen in a very quick manner. So they're trying to figure it out.
Okay, I just, again, I don't know if that's a future agenda item. I just, it's like around the corner and.
Doesn't, it does not affect the way we do our business right now. I mean, I would, if I had to add this, I mean, in all of our schools, we have the lunch programs for one of our policing model programs. So our officers, on a regular basis, not just our SROs, go to each of the schools and have a presence.
Required every shift to make a stop, right? Is that right?
Require, it's, it's, it's recommended, okay? So, watch. But I mean, we have, there's so many things going on all the time. They, they, they do those things on a regular basis. They know the value of our community and the, and the little ones.
I just didn't know how it affected us with the new letter of the law. You know me.
I think that's one of the things on this list, too, is a legis, is some sort of a conversation about legislative impact, right?
That is on the list, yes.
So getting back to the list, are you looking for us to give recommendations now, or?
We've got some time, because really, at this point, the first open date we would have is October 10th. So if that's something y'all want to talk, discuss, think about over.
10th is a Tuesday.
I'm sorry?
October 10th is a Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that would be the next council meeting.
It'd be a nighttime workshop, right?
Yes, correct, okay. So if y'all want to think about that, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting and determine which one we might want to plug in there.
Put it on a workshop.
Depending on the topic, we can do more than one, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Did, did you have anything, I think you had, from your slide presentation on STRs from earlier, did we finish that, or rental, or do we need to go in the training room to do that?
Let's see, Lord, can we do it from here?
Yeah.
You missed her nice and tidy.
STRs are short-term rentals, by the way.
I have to pull mine all nice and pretty. I'm going to have to.
Oh, you need to click it.
Before I give it back.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it.
Come up to the podium, come on.
Do you want me to?
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, so Mayor, at council, we did, of course, we got through the, the very end of the, the short-term rentals. And then the other discussion tonight was a single family, single-family rental inspection program. There we go. So this is just some aspects of a single-family rental program. Some cities require rental registration and inspection programs. As there are cities aging, the housing stock is getting older. Louisville has one, several other cities around here does, Capel has one as well. Generally, what it requires is an annual registration, and then an inspection is required when a tenant changes. Some of the cities have it where a tenant can also request an inspection. That's generally getting into an issue between tenant landlord, which can certainly be complicated. So the city of Highland Village actually adopted a single-family rental inspection program in 1986, and it was repealed in 2004. At that point, it was getting to be too much staff time for the staff that we had. By today's standards, of course, we don't have a whole lot of building going on, of new. new construction. However, our inspectors stay very busy with remodeling permits, fence permits, you name it. If we were to do something like this, I think it would, would take some work. It would also take some work to really figure out how many houses we have that are rental. Ken did a little bit of research on a database. He narrowed it down from the over 5,000 homes that we have down to about
Well, four or five hundred, we have to check that.
Yeah, that we would have to confirm. That doesn't mean all, all that, all of those are rentals, it's just depending on when you run a database, is the last name right, is everything queued correctly, but it would take some work to do that. So that's just kind of the basics of that. But Councilmember Hearst, you had brought this up, and we certainly appreciate any comments you have with regard to that and what that might look like if we were to do that.
I think there should be an annual inspection.
Pardon?
I think there should be an annual inspection.
For rentals?
For rentals. I think, I know in my area, there's a potential boarding house being run that has some sketchy wiring, even the real estate agents have seen it, and so I just would hate something to happen to a family that's living in our city and they're renters, and they don't have the freedom to make or the money to make the changes or whatnot, and I don't want it to be on us.
How often does Louisville inspect their rental homes? I had a rental over there, and before I could sign a new tenant, I had to get inspected by the city. Do we know, is that an annual or is that on turn of a contract?
Louisville, actually, there's a somewhat voluntary, they, they do try to do it as an annual inspection.
Well, they, they wouldn't voluntary, I couldn't sign, I couldn't lease it without having it inspected by the city.
And that generally, it is a way that works, so if you're about to lease a house, you'd have to get it inspected, as long as that tenant's in there, no reinspection when a new tenant comes in, another inspection occurs.
Town, Little Elm, they do it every time a new tenant signs and leaves.
That's reasonable, and
And they track it by the water bill.
Yep. Well, can a tenant, say a tenant's been there a few years, can they say, hey, I need an, can they call in for an annual inspection to make sure, I mean, just to backcheck their landlord?
Never had it after that, because
Well, I know they probably don't want to, but
Yeah. A tenant, some of the ordinances, a tenant can request it, so of course, if you had a longstanding tenant, yeah, maybe you would want to do it more.
I just think it's our, don't our multifamily have, don't they get, they're to a different level and they're inspect, or whatever, so shouldn't we provide the same type of quality or assurances to, to families and, that are renting homes?
You're looking for guidance.
I believe in that, you guys, for that direction. You know, I will say, of course, for the exterior, we, we can do things, we can't always see the interior, we don't know. So if there are issues on the exterior, those can be addressed. The interior, without a program, is pretty difficult to, to address.
Doesn't that depend on how we write the ordinance, though? If we write it with stipulations that the owner must provide one or more fire extinguishers in certain locations, as we do in multifamily, the fire department has to inspect and make sure those are up to code, then you can incorporate fire inspections if we have the staff to do that as well, that's another consideration that we have to make. So I think there are ways we can achieve that goal, depends on how we write this.
And not to be super intrusive, but I know, like, when I, when I got my hot water heater done and went through the city, we had to make sure, we had all our carbon monoxide things there, which, okay, I mean, I didn't, I mean, it makes sense, but, so when I am doing, that just gives a level of safety, and it's not
Well, I concern myself with the tenants, and I think that's what your concern is, the safety of the tenants.
That's where I'm at.
I think a bigger discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, in the meantime, too, if we can look at that database, see if there's a way to narrow it down and really find out the number of, of units we may be talking about.
Anything else? Anybody have any other future items, anyone? All right, that's the case, we are done at 9:11. Thank you, everybody. 10:11, I'm sorry, 10:11.